Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the seventh meeting of fiscal year 2023 of the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And before we do administrative items, if we can all go around and introduce ourselves and the staff. Maggie?
By Gilfield member.
Sean?
Don Fahey member.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
And myself, Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. And for our staff, we have Tim.
Tim Zawinski, Director of Planning and Community Development. Josh Lee will not be joining us tonight. He's actually recovering from jaw surgery. So he won't be talking for a while. He's also hopefully getting some rest, but he'll be back on his feet typing furiously next week.
Great. Give him our best, hopefully speedy recovery. And Julia?
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Great, thank you all. So to begin, we can start with our administrative items. Just for everyone, for your calendar, our next scheduled meeting dates are October 27th and November 10th.
Meredith, do you want to talk a little bit about what to do about Thanksgiving at this point or hold off on that?
Yeah, you know what? I was gonna approach that with the members because that will fall right on that week, which obviously we're not going to meet on Thanksgiving. And I was gonna sort of look to see what we have on the agenda. I am actually going to be out of the country the early part of that week, but we could either bump it. You know, and it may be we maybe we hold off and make a decision, Tim, and we could talk about what we have on our agenda. If that's a meeting, we could actually just not have that week. Or if there's something pressing that we would need to meet. And make that determination.
That makes total sense. We can we can probably even as late as the 10th figure that out.
Right, right. So, okay. Great. Thank you, Julia, for pointing that out because I had been thinking about that and sort of how to approach that calendar. Time period. Okay, so then, so we've got some minutes. And Julia, thank you so much for you've been getting these all together for us to go through and we had deferred at our last meeting. Going through, we we actually have, I believe, going back to August 25th. As meeting minutes to yet to be approved, we have August, excuse me, September 8th. So the August 25th, September 8th, September 22nd. And Cheryl, I know Julia had just finished the 27th yesterday afternoon, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at those yet.
No, not the 27th yet, but Meredith, what I have is the August 22nd as well as the 25th. And then September 8th and September 22nd. I did send some edits through Julia on all of those, so hopefully everybody got to see those. And the 27th, like I said, I just saw that.
Hold on to those.
Yeah, so hold on.
So we have those, the four sets, the August 22nd, which I had looked at, and I thought we'd already approved those. The September 8th and the 22nd of September.
So I assume that the email from Julia yesterday include your edits?
Yes.
Great, okay. Yeah. I had I have no I have no questions or I'm good with the minutes that Julia sent yesterday. That was 8:22, 8:25, 9:08 and 9:22.
Okay, so that is that a motion?
I would make a motion to to accept those minutes as minutes of the meeting for those dates.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, thank you all, and we will look over the 27th once we've gotten a chance to all review those. And Tim, a staff update, if you will?
So I there's a couple of things on the agenda later on that kind of I would normally talk about briefly in staff update. So I'll kind of hold off until until those items come up. But one thing that I wanted to let you know that my office has been working on, and you may see this in a upcoming warrant for the special town meeting, is an article related to the granting of an easement for the 728 Randolph Ave 4B project. I don't know if you talked about this at this at this board, or if anyone has been kind of attending those meetings, you may know a little bit about this story. But I'll just kind of give you a really brief version. I'm going to share my screen real quick. The board has reviewed this project and has offered comments on it. The the public hearing is still open. But, you know, one of the issues, can everyone see the the mapper here?
Yes.
So one of the issues with this project, and this is 728, so this is, you know, sort of arrowhead shaped parcel. 728 shares this driveway with 736 and 718. This is the access for these three simple family houses. The original proposal that we got, you know, includes it's a 40 unit, you know, condo building kind of roughly in this area. You know, proposes some some pretty dramatic changes to the the right of way of this shared driveway. The topography getting from Randolph Ave to up here is not great. You know, it involves changing the driveway to 718. You know, to say nothing of, you know, the implications of a driveway kind of for serving 40 plus units immediately after a signalized intersection right here on 28, which everyone knows is just one of the worst roads in the region, if not the Commonwealth. So that's been something that the the Board of Appeals, you know, through its peer reviewers and through comments from town staff has been really wrestling with, of how do we get safe and effective access, you know, to this project? You know, without, you know, without being unsafe. One notion that came up relatively early on was, well, the site has frontage on the dump access road, which, you know, just to zoom out a little bit. You know, when the golf course used to be a dump, this is how you would get up to the dump. You would go up the access road and dump your garbage and, you know, come back down. You know, the the dump has since been capped. It's golf course now. There's no access to the golf course, no public access to the golf course via this road. Really, the only folks that were using this road are, if there are maintenance, you know, things, you know, at the back end of the golf course or National Grid has a station kind of down this path here, and so they have access to this access road. You know, it's currently not really being used for any other function. We are planning a new animal shelter up here, so eventually, hopefully in the near future, there'll be some additional public access to be able to get up there, but as of right now, it is a very little used, you know, access drive. So the Board of Appeals had asked the developer to sort of, you know, come up with a conceptual site plan that instead of accessing Randolph Ave from here, access to the access road. And what we all found was the site plan itself was superior. They were able to kind of position the building in a way that, you know, mitigated some of the impacts on the abutting property owners. But more importantly, it put traffic onto the access road, which, as you're all probably aware, drains out to a signalized intersection, which, you know, currently affects East Street Randolph Ave. But, you know, if if this plan were to go through, you know, we'd be able to have a cycle for the access road. Much safer, everyone can take right or left or whatever they need to do at a signal without having to sort of deal with the traffic on Randolph Ave. The issue with that plan is that the access road, while it is owned by the town, it's not considered to be a townway in the same way that Kent Ave or Walnut Street or Cheever Street or Hillside Street are townways. On a townway, if you have frontage, you can request a driveway permit to get access to that to that public way. That's what public ways are for. They're there for property owners to access them, to get in and out of their sites. Because it's not a townway, you basically can't get onto the access road unless you're given explicit permission by the town via town meeting. So the sort of the options for getting access to the access road are kind of, there's three options that are kind of out there. The weakest one is sort of a license agreement, which is something that the town can enter into that allows one to have, you know, rights or access to town property. It's relatively weak, can be terminated by either side, be very difficult to get financing for the project based on a license agreement. On the strong end of access is, well, let's just make the access road a townway, which may be something we'd be interested in doing in the long term. But right now, you know, because, again, once it's a townway, everyone can have the right to, you know, pop a driveway onto it. So you've got 736 has frontage, the golf course has frontage, the horse farm has frontage, you know, there are folk, you know, it's it's something that, you know, we haven't really kind of teased out all of the kind of down the road, pun intended, consequences of that. So the middle ground option is an easement, which would be directly to the benefit of this property and this property exclusively, and would allow them to have access to the access road. It's a property right in town property, and so again, that's something that has to go to town meeting and get town meeting approval. The select board can accept easements, can't give easements. And so we've drafted an article that would give this property easement rights to the access road. And we're working on an easement agreement that we can sort of bring to the warrant committee and then, you know, eventually bring to the special town meeting. It's my department's opinion, and, you know, the Board of Appeals hasn't, you know, explicitly weighed in, but in those public hearings, everyone has kind of, you know, agreed that this plan would yield a superior site plan. It would be safer for this project. And, you know, the benefit is this developer, you know, would need to make improvements to the access road, you know, to accommodate their traffic. You know, for for a pretty decent portion, you know, the easement would kind of end at the sort of northern portion of their property line. And so that's, you know, improvements to public facilities that, you know, the town would be on the hook later on via the animal shelter project. So that's something that we've been working on. It's not explicitly a planning board thing. It's it's really through the select board, but that's something that we've been working on to, you know, help make this project as as good and safe and minimally impactful as as possible. So, you know, stay tuned for that. I'm at the warrant committee next week. And then, you know, you'll probably see that when the warrants come up.
Thank you, Tim, for that. That update.
Cheryl and Maggie have questions.
Yes, yes. I don't know who had their hand up first, but.
Thank you. I just want to mention that when the planning board submitted comments to the select board when this 40B first came in, we included a suggestion that the access road be considered for access to the 40B. So I'm I'm hoping, Tim, that you'll be looking for a planning board's support for this. And I'd like for us to have, if not tonight, at another meeting, a discussion about formally granting that support for that access.
Yeah, I think it's something we would want to support. But we should hear from everybody. Maggie?
Yeah, so that was sort of what I was going to suggest too, because I do know, like, back in May, it's my understanding when this started that even the neighbor, you know, at 718 actually brought it up to the ZBA that they supported the access road. And they really kind of wanted to pursue it back then, and it's sort of a little bit unfortunate that they waited so long to now do this. But I'm kind of wondering if you've received a new plan for the project yet? Is has anything changed? Because I think during what I've been following through the ZBA, they've mostly just discussed the the access. And so I'm kind of wondering if there's any been any discussion on, you know, setbacks and landscaping and design of building? Because I would hate for us to go through all of this and have a town meeting vote, and then it goes back to ZBA and then, you know, there's kind of an impasse because it wasn't fully vetted at the beginning.
Yeah, great. Those are very good observations. And I think they're questions that the ZBA and the applicant and town staff have kind of been wrestling with is the is the wrong word, but so we do have a kind of, like I said, it's a conceptual plan. The thing you have to understand about a developer is they're not going to pay their engineer to kind of come up with every sort of option that everyone asks for. Actually feasible things that that may work out. So they put, you know, again, they're confident that they can have a site plan where this works. They've shown on a survey plan, you know, where the building could potentially be, where the driveway could potentially be. They haven't worked it up to a full engineering standard to sort of know what the stormwater implications are. I think everyone kind of has a best guess that, you know, it has positive or at least neutral implications for everything that's been studied so far. The the sort of the procedural way that this has been working, and again, you have to understand that, you know, a developer in a 40B situation, you know, tends to have the upper hand on a town. And so, you know, they still feel confident that they have a site plan that they submitted that, you know, could be approved and could sustain, you know, any kind of appeal that anyone would want to make on it. And so the the scheduling of, you know, where this public hearing is based on when it was, when it opened, there's 180 day, you know, time limit to make a decision versus when we could get an article before a special town meeting, there's a gap of a couple of months. And, you know, what we've been arguing all along is, you know, look, you know, even if you think that you would use the easement, it behooves you to just continue the public hearing until after town meeting votes. Because if, you know, we approve a project that maybe we don't like, and then town meeting votes and approves the easement, you're going to have to come back with an amended plan anyway. So we might as well just leave the public hearing open. And then, you know, you could revise that plan in the context of the open public hearing. They pushed back on that a little bit, but we finally won them over. So the the public hearing is still open. It's going to be open. It's been continued to January 24th, which should technically, you know, if everything works out at town meeting on December 8th, I think it is, you know, should give the the developer enough time to fully work up a new site plan. My my hope is that they'll work in collaboration with the Board of Appeals, peer reviewers and town staff so that, you know, the site plan that goes in front of the Board of Appeals on the 24th already has some of those kinks ironed out. Obviously, it's part of a public hearing, so we've got to, you know, have it and show people, you know, and and, you know, you know, be open to to the public comments that would come at that. The 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 deadline for making a decision that the Board of Appeals has has been extended to, I think, I think it's the end of February. I could be wrong. So there's there's two sort of the gaps of time built in. One, to do the site plan, get to a public hearing, hear any feedback from, you know, whoever abutters, town staff, whoever. And then enough time to sort of make those tweaks, you know, before a decision has to be rendered. So the the applicant has been, you know, cooperative in that regard. They've been cooperative in terms of, you know, discussing, you know, taking advantage of this easement. So I think we're in a decent place. Now, obviously, Board of Appeals can't say, yeah, we'll definitely approve this, you know, because they don't have a plan in front of them. But I think we're generally moving in a pretty good direction, and then there's time built into that schedule to make it happen.
Thank you.
That's great. Any other questions? Any other items? Tim, on your update list? Good?
Nope. We'll have a we'll have a assigned contract for the open space plan process hopefully next week, and then we can get movement on that. And we'll probably be periodically giving the planning board updates on that. Meredith serves on that on that planning committee, so really excited for that process to get moving.
That's great.
I shouldn't have said anything because now Cheryl has questions.
Cheryl, yes, go ahead.
Just a question quickly on the on the easement. Are you looking at that for the December town meeting? All right, so can we put on the agenda then, Meredith, a discussion about taking a vote in support that we would then share with the select board and the warrant committee on on that so that that can get into the record before town meeting?
Absolutely. I, you know, Tim, you can let me know once you feel like you've sort of vetted it and have a sort of a clear idea of what what we're talking about and what the what the article will look like.
Yeah, so we've got we've got a draft article in. The the deadline was yesterday, so we have that in. I think the select board are going to be opening and closing the warrant at their at their next meeting next week. And then I'm at the warrant committee on the 20th. So I think unless something traumatic happens, you know, we'll kind of know what those boards are thinking within, you know, two weeks. So for the the meeting on, what is it, the 27th is the next meeting? We'll have a lot of that feedback.
That's great. And if you could maybe circulate a draft, you know, when you what you have, just so people can sort of have the time to review that too. That would be great. Any other questions on that? Okay, then we can move on. The next item on our agenda is citizens speak. I don't know if there's any members of the public, if they would like to raise their hand, if you would like to speak this evening.
Um, yes, Wynn Swenson, I can pop him up.
Yep. Oh, thank you.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, Wynn. Welcome.
Hi, Wynn Swenson, 65 Green Street, Milton. Mr. Tagayas, I felt concerned reading your setting the record straight letter in the Milton Times today. And I just wanted to respond a little bit to it because I honestly didn't think the letter did set the record straight. And because I think it does suggest that you maybe don't accept responsibility for what is not a mortal sin, but was a violation of good government principles. I think we all know by now that the issue involves the fact that Mr. Tagayas recruited and promoted a candidate from an MPIC membership who is a business client. Mr. Tagayas, your Times letter says, and I'm quoting here, "My architectural practice," so in other words, "my firm, my architectural practice was engaged by Mr. Petion a couple of years ago," end quote. "That implies that the business relationship was indirect, only with your firm, not you personally, and that it was all in the distant past." "But the relationship isn't just with your firm. You personally have been working directly on Mr. Petion's project. For example, representing his project at the Boston Planning and Development Agency. Your name is on the drawings for that project." "That representation before the BB BPD A occurred within the last few months, not years ago." you know, a developer in a 40B situation, you know, tends to have the upper hand on a town. And so, you know, they still feel confident that they have a site plan that they submitted that, you know, could be approved and could sustain, you know, any kind of appeal that anyone would want to make on it. And so the scheduling of, you know, where this public hearing is based on when it was, when it opened, there's 180 day, you know, time limit to make a decision versus when we could get an article before a special town meeting, there's a gap of a couple of months. And, you know, what we've been arguing all along is, you know, look, you know, even if you think that you would use the easement, it behooves you to just continue the public hearing until after town meeting votes. Because if, you know, we approve a project that maybe we don't like, and then town meeting votes and approves the easement, you're going to have to come back with an amended plan anyway. So we might as well just leave the public hearing open. And then, you know, you could revise that plan in the context of the public hearing. They pushed back on that a little bit, but we finally won them over. So the public hearing is still open. It's going to be open. It's been continued to January 24th, which should technically, you know, if everything works out at town meeting on December 8th, I think it is, you know, should give the developer enough time to fully work up a new site plan. My hope is that they'll work in collaboration with the Board of Appeals, peer reviewers and town staff. So that, you know, the site plan that goes in front of the Board of Appeals on the 24th already has some of those kinks ironed out. Obviously, it's part of a public hearing, so we've got to, you know, have it and show people, you know, and, you know, be open to the public comments that would come at that. The deadline for making a decision that the Board of Appeals has, has been extended to, I think, I think it's the end of February. I could be wrong. So there's, there's two sort of the gaps of time built in. One, to do the site plan, get to a public hearing, hear any feedback from, you know, whoever, a butters, town staff, whoever. And then enough time to sort of make those tweaks, you know, before a decision has to be rendered. So the applicant has been, you know, cooperative in that regard. They've been cooperative in terms of, you know, discussing, you know, taking advantage of this easement. So I think we're in a decent place. Now, obviously, Board of Appeals can't say, yeah, we'll definitely approve this, you know, because they don't have a plan in front of them. But I think we're generally moving in a pretty good direction. And then there's time built into that schedule to make it happen.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other items? Tim, on your update list? Good?
Nope. We'll have a, we'll have a signed contract for the open space plan process hopefully next week, and then we can get moving on that. And we'll probably be periodically giving the planning board updates on that. Meredith shares on that, on that planning committee. So really excited for that process to get moving.
That's great.
I shouldn't have said anything because now Cheryl has questions.
Oh, Cheryl, yes, go ahead.
Just a question quickly on the, on the easement. Are you looking at that for the December town meeting? All right. So can we put on the agenda then, Meredith, a discussion about taking a vote in support that we would then share with the select board and the warrant committee on that so that that can get into the record before town meeting?
Absolutely. I, you know, Tim, you can let me know once you feel like you've sort of vetted it and have a sort of a clear idea of what, what we're talking about and what the, what the article will look like.
Yeah, so we've got, we've got a draft article in. The deadline was yesterday, so we have that in. I think the select board are going to be opening and closing the warrant at their, at their next meeting next week. And then I'm at the warrant committee on the 20th. So I think unless something dramatic happens, you know, we'll kind of know what those boards are thinking within, you know, two weeks. So for the, the meeting on, what is it? The 27th is the next meeting. We'll have a lot of that feedback.
That's great. And if you could maybe circulate a draft, you know, when you, what you have, just so people can sort of have the time to review that too. That would be great. Any other questions on that? Okay, then we can move on. The next item on our agenda is citizens speak. I don't know if there's any members of the public, if they would like to raise their hand, if you would like to speak this evening.
Vince Swenson, I can pop him up.
Yep. Oh, thank you.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, Win. Welcome.
Hi, Vince Swenson, 65 Green Street, Milton. Mr. Gaias, I felt concerned reading your setting the record straight letter in the Milton Times today. And I just wanted to respond a little bit to it. Because I honestly didn't think the letter did set the record straight. And because I think it does suggest that you maybe don't accept responsibility for what is not a mortal sin, but was a violation of good government principles. I think we all know by now that the issue involves the fact that Mr. Gaias recruited and promoted a candidate from an MPIC membership who is a business client. This is to Gaias, your Times letter says, and I'm quoting here, "My architectural practice," so in other words, my firm, "my architectural practice was engaged by Mr. Petion a couple of years ago," end quote. "That implies that the business relationship was indirect, only with your firm, not you personally, and that it was all in the distant past. But the relationship isn't just with your firm. You personally have been working directly on Mr. Petion's project. For example, representing his project at the Boston Planning and Development Agency. Your name is on the drawings for that project. That representation before the BPDA occurred within the last few months, not years ago. And public documents say the project is ongoing for the next year or so. Your Milton Times letter states that you disclosed the conflict, but that disclosure, of course, happened only after you lobbied for Mr. Petion as an MPC IC candidate, and only after your conflict was called to the public's attention at a planning board meeting. Lastly, and this is a bit alarming to me, you seem to imply there is no conflict because you didn't, you would reap no financial benefit from the candidate's service on MPIC. This isn't the test as to whether a conflict of interest exists. The test is whether you have a private interest that will or may reasonably appear to others to interfere with your objectivity in performing town duties. Seeking to populate a town committee of which you are the chair, and which will report to a town board of which you are a member, with business associates certainly meets that conflict of interest appearance test. So for my background, I've been professionally advising board CEOs in the United States government, including the Department of Justice, SEC, the US Air Force, and other government agencies in official capacity on ethics matters for over 25 years. And yet, in many ways, I think these issues aren't complicated. They usually boil down to what's fair, what's right, what's wrong. And I believe that most people in the world want town government to function free from bias caused by hidden private interests. And I think that characterizing calls for good government as quote unquote, personal attacks, as Ms. Taguas does in her letter, is a disservice, a deflection, and an award wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I do see we have another hand up. Michael Chinman, if you want to welcome Michael to the meeting.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I've got a dog that's somewhat rambunctious right now, so he might interrupt this.
That's okay.
So Vince Swenson just said that seeking to populate a town committee with someone you work with would cause a reasonable person to believe that there's a conflict of interest. Cheryl Taguas, in her capacity on MPIC, as the Chair of MPIC, was not seeking to populate a committee by doing anything there because MPIC does not select its members. MPIC does not select its own members. Cheryl Taguas could go to the bakery and say, I think Joe Blow would be a good member of MPIC. And that's not acting in any official capacity because going to the bakery doesn't select a member. But Cheryl Taguas as a planning board member, that's when she does select MPIC members. And prior to Cheryl Taguas as a planning board member to participating in a discussion of who should be on MPIC, prior to that, Cheryl Taguas disclosed in writing that she had a professional relationship with a person that she would be discussing. Okay? And so Vince Swenson can say that it raises a reasonable belief in someone that there's a conflict. But what he is not saying to you is that giving a written disclosure about your relationship removes the conflict. It's not reasonable to conclude that there is such a conflict after disclosures made in writing. And I want to note, Meredith, that you also work with somebody who is being discussed. You also sought to populate a town committee with someone you work with. But you, unlike Cheryl Taguas, did not make any disclosure in writing. In fact, I don't think you made any disclosure at all, except I see that you told the Milton Times that you didn't have to disclose because it was not an ongoing working relationship because you had only recently started working together. If you recently started working together, that sounds to me like an ongoing working relationship. So Vince Swenson can point fingers at Cheryl Taguas. Vince Swenson is the spouse of Denny Swenson, who, Meredith, was, I believe, involved in your campaign. And, you know, there is all sorts of factions that evolved on the planning board, especially during the discussion, heated discussion last year of some of those topics. And Denny Swenson and Cheryl Taguas were often not on the same side. And now for Denny Swenson's spouse to be attacking Cheryl Taguas as unethical for doing the ethical thing and disclosing while, Meredith, you did not disclose, there's something wrong there. And the bigger point is, stop all this sniping. Stop trying to harm each other on the planning board. Three of you ran campaigns saying that people need to be listened to, and the people need to be heated. And the people, guess what? They voted for Cheryl Taguas. They voted for Rich. All right? Those are both elected planning board members. Stop trying to harm them. Stop with the factions. Stop with getting surrogates to call in and raise points that will be harmful. Just do the planning board job and cut it out with these false accusations of ethical problems. It's just, it's just not helpful to what the town's interest is, what the town's business here. Just stop it.
Thank you, Michael. And could you state your address just for the record? So we have.
Fourth or three Elliott Street.
Thank you so much. Okay. And are there any other, anyone else who would like to speak this evening? I'm not seeing any other hands at this time. Okay, thank you. We can now move on unless, I don't know if anyone wants to make a comment. Cheryl, you know, I certainly am. You're welcome to, if you have anything you need to say, but. No, okay. All right, then let's move on to our new business and some exciting things that are happening with the Milton Landing. Tim, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, certainly. So, and it's, it's a shame that Josh isn't around because he actually has his hands in a lot of this stuff as well. But I'm going to, I'm going to do my best. We're obviously working together on a number of things. So everyone on the planning board should be well aware of our ongoing work at Milton Landing and Milton Village. The, the Milton Village rezoning, the Milton Village design guidelines, which I think everyone is very proud of, actually started as the seed of all of that was a dock for the crew team. And that kind of snowballed into a really kind of expansive reimagining of that whole district, which I think is great. It's a really great kind of endorsement of planning and how it can go, can go right. So, you know, everyone, everyone is aware, you know, we just recently approved the design guidelines. I'm hoping to get some applications for projects under the Milton Village zoning and making sure that, you know, folks have those design guidelines in their hands. But the landing in particular, there are a couple of things that we have cooking right now. I am going to share my screen just so that you can have a map of the landing up. Does everyone see that?
Yes.
So one thing that we are working on is via a, a Mass Trails grant, which is a state grant program about building and designing trails and greenways and bike paths and things like that. And I'm actually going to bring up a Google map because you want to be able to see the Boston side on this. Sorry, folks. But we are doing a feasibility study that's going to look at the feasibility of connecting the Naponts Greenway to Milton Landing via a spur that goes over this abandoned rail bridge that's adjacent to the Matapan Trolley Tracks. So, so here's the river right here. Here's the back of extra space. Here's 88 Wharf. The Deposit Trail, which I think everyone agrees is, is one of the Commonwealth's premier recreational assets, is right here. The Matapan Trolley Tracks are right here. They go to Milton Station, Central Ave, and then onward to Matapan, and then over to Cedar Grove and Ashmont. And then there's another rail bridge that you may, you may know as a popular spot for kids to jump into the water, which I never thought I'd see, but they're doing it every summer. This is currently, you know, defunct. The rails are there on the bridge. The rails don't extend anywhere else. You know, I don't know how long it's been defunct, but, you know, there's, there's no trains there. There is a, there is a bit in the special permit for 88 Wharf, which, which was obviously, you know, executed and completed a number of years ago that says, you know, part of their obligation was to sort of build this harbor walk or, you know, around their property and then down to, you know, the end to where Captain's Landing is. They've had ongoing maintenance responsibilities for that. It's a really nice, you know, thing to have a nice walkway along the river. But it sort of ends here where you see this tree right here. And if you've ever been over there, there's a fence, you know, that prevents you from getting to the back over here. There's nothing to do back here, so we don't want you back there. But there is a clause in, in that special permit that basically says, you know, if, if we're able to, you know, guarantee, you know, security for the property, that 88 Wharf would open up that gate if it was feasible to sort of have an extension of a trail to kind of get over this bridge. So we're doing that. We've got an engineering firm that's sort of doing a feasibility study. They're actually out in their kayak this week going under the bridge, doing some investigations about, you know, the structural supports and then kind of looking at the condition of the bridge to basically figure out if we can do a treatment similar to the Naponts Trail over here, which is sort of a, you know, a pressure-treated wood decking over, you know, the steel structure that carries the trail over. The implications of this are, you would then be able to connect this trail here across the bridge and then get it over to the Dorchester side on this side of the tracks. There's a little bit of topography here, but if you can get up to Medway Street, now we are at Ventura Park, which is a lovely little spot in this kind of, quite frankly, remote and oftentimes forgotten portion of Dorchester. It's kind of on a hill on the other side of the tracks. And we, we're hoping to be able to get a spur of the Greenway over this bridge into Ventura Park. And then, you know, the sky's the limit. You know, if there's an ability to get out into this area, which is, you know, a lot of marshland, a lot of wetland, you know, but there is an ability to sort of get out there and even sort of, you know, connect back to the trail at Butler T Station, you know, the thinking being that all of the other stuff that we have cooking down at Milton Landing, you know, we believe is going to really make it a premier ecological and recreational spot in this region. It's really the only place to put a boat in the water in this entire area of Milton and Southern Dorchester. People are going to want to get there. And, you know, currently, if you're on the trail, the only way to do it is to, you know, cross the tracks at grade at Milton Station and then go through the parking lot and then kind of, you know, go through Wharf Street, you know, and then there you are. If we can get a sort of a dedicated spur that connects this recreational resource with Milton Landing, you know, now people can directly get to the landing from the trail, you know, without having to cross, you know, parking lots and things like that. So we think it would be really great. So we've got a grant that we're working on that. If it's shown to be feasible, step two is, you know, working with DCR and the City of Boston on, you know, what's it going to take to actually make this thing happen? And get some design on the Boston side for, you know, for a trail. The next thing that we have working on is, if you all remember, one of the first things that we did related to Milton Village, Milton Landing was work with MAPC on a recreational and waterfront access plan, which basically kind of evaluated this Milton Landing area, you know, what are the, what's the physical kind of layout of it? Who are the current users? How do we want to be using, you know, this, this property? How can we accommodate, you know, the folks that want to sort of get down there? And, you know, we're thinking the yacht club, we're thinking Milton Crew, we're thinking future potential recreational concessions, whether it's canoe and kayak or charter boats or water taxi or whatever. And so MAPC put together, you know, a conceptual plan that laid out, you know, several different options for facilities and kind of changes to the area that would be necessary to accommodate, you know, those different types of uses and the current users that we have down there. It's schematic, it's conceptual, it's a first step. We had wanted to, we actually applied for a larger grant last year to engage with an engineering firm to kind of work up those plans to a higher engineering standard to sort of, you know, do a formal survey, figure out, you know, what type of, you know, price out the different landscaping, hardscape. You know, we're not talking about big time construction down here, but, you know, what is it going to take to sort of improve the docks, to create new docks, to improve the sea wall, to, you know, implement other resiliency and adaptation measures for sea level rise? We didn't get that grant, but we did get the Mass Trails grant. We kind of split the scope in two. And we're actually working with a team of UBS Dartmouth engineering students to kind of do that work that we were trying to get the grant for last year. So they've got, you know, it's, it's part of their, you know, practice, you know, in their, in their degree program to effectively do an engineering project. And that includes pricing things out, that includes doing the drawings. They're under the supervision of a professional engineering firm. So, you know, we're hoping to kind of, again, work up that MAPC plan so that we can have, you know, distinct projects that we can then start to prioritize. You know, once you know what you're doing and how much it'll cost, then you can start to look for funding, whether it's CPC, whether it's additional grant funding, whether it's capital funding. And so that's, it's, it's a really great opportunity to get, you know, for all intents and purposes, you know, free labor from students. Really great. We've had initial meeting, we had a site walk with them, they're very talented. And I think they're going to put us in a good place to start to sort of spin off some of these projects. Meredith, I don't know if you want to, I see Cheryl's got her hand raised. I don't know if you want me to kind of, I've got a couple more things, but I don't know if we want to take a breather and answer questions. Meredith, you're muted.
Go ahead, Cheryl. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Tim, I understand that the Select Boards Committee, I don't know the exact title of that committee, but that's working on the landing, issued an RFP today for the use of the waterfront. Are you working with that committee? Are you familiar with the RFP?
Very literally, the next thing that I was going to talk about.
All right. Well then, I'm, my hands coming down.
Sean.
Sean, yes, go ahead, Sean. You're muted, Sean.
Sorry, thank you. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Meredith. Tim, just a quick question. First, I, I like anything that allows us to advance utilization of Milton Landing and its value as a resource for the community. What happens with using that railroad crossing? We would need collaboration from the City of Boston to take care of access at the end of it on the Boston side. Is that right?
Yeah, so, you know, it would have to be because there is no, you know, as of right now, there is, there's a kind of a, I don't know if it's formal or informal, but there is, there is a walking trail that kind of gets up. If you've ever been on Medway Street, Medway Street kind of is a bridge and then kind of goes uphill a little bit, you know, to get to Beer Sav. There's a stone wall, but there are breaks in the wall. So people, people go down this hill to like get to this area of Ventura Park on the side of the river. I saw a guy playing an electric guitar on this prom at one time. Bananas. But people hang out down here and they get there that way. What we would need to do is, you know, again, with collaboration from the City of Boston, you know, figure out like, okay, you know, if we want to extend a trail into Ventura Park or, you know, to Butler Station to create that spur, you know, how is, how is that going to look? We've, we've had, you know, we've talked with, with the district councillor in Dorchester. We've spoke with members of the Parks Department staff. Everyone is, you know, in these early days, everyone's always like, yeah, sounds good, you know, so that's great. We haven't gotten the outright, no, we're never considered this. But we would need to, you know, come to them, you know, with some, you know, collaborative, you know, hey, you know, what's the next step on this? And then obviously, you know, DCR, I think, I think the T still technically owns this, but we would kind of work with DCR because the Deposit Greenway, you know, would be a DCR asset. So yes, there'd be ongoing work that would need to be done. I have just realized that I've been kind of pointing at my map. And I am not actually sharing my screen, so sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay. Thanks. Thanks for that answer.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm good. Yeah, I'm going to bring the screen share back up. So yeah, as Cheryl. So yeah, as Cheryl discussed, the other thing that we are working on in this, so Josh actually staffs this committee, so he's got a knowledge of how things are going, you know, I talk to Josh every day, so I also know what's going on, but I wouldn't normally toss this off to him. So the Select Board has a, it's called the Select Board Landing Committee. As you're probably aware, we own twenty five Wharf Street, which is, and this is where the GIS mapper comes in handy. So twenty five Wharf Street is all of this, and this is a town owned asset. So includes the Wharf Street, includes the stairway, the electric charger lot, this park, which is owned by the town, but is actually maintained by eighty eight Wharf. And then, you know, what is effectively Milton Yacht Club. They're headquartered out of the lockup building, so named because it was the original police station and there's, there's a jail cell in there. And then sort of the main ramp that the yacht club uses to get into the water over here, in addition to some boat storage over here. What you may also be aware of is this parcel, which is called forty one Wharf Street, up until very recently was owned by the eighty eight Wharf condo association. That harkens back to the old days when this was a hood warehouse and then even before that was whatever industrial use was over here. But all of this was sort of industrial and was owned by the same factories and warehouses and industrial uses. So that kind of relationship, even though they're non-contiguous and kind of unrelated parcels, those guys always owned this. We recently, I'm pretty sure that the deed has gone through, but we're in the process, if we haven't already, you know, executed a purchase of forty one Wharf. So effectively, the town now owns all of this down here. It's important for the town to kind of control all of this. We've had easement rights along this forever. This is a town owned parcel. This is Captain's Landing down here. So we've had easements to sort of access town, Captain's Landing. That in effect has been public parking for as long as most folks can remember. But we've never owned this. Now that we do, the landing committee has been kind of working on, okay, how do we, how do we get people down here, you know, using and operating these town owned assets? Milton Yacht Club has been a tenant down here for probably more than a hundred years. They have been subject to a lease with the town. But their lease is actually, I forget when it expired, but it expired a while ago. And they've been effectively kind of month to month with the town as a tenant at will. We tried to issue an RFP back in 2020 that kind of, you know, to attract some other users, you know, down there. Didn't get really any response. And so the town basically just kind of tossed the results of that RFP. And then again, the yacht club has been, you know, a tenant at will, you know, paying their rent every month and kind of, you know, working on that. So really the goal here is to have a, I don't want to say long term, because I don't think it would be long term, we're probably talking, I forget exactly what the RFP says, but potentially a ten year lease, but a firm kind of, you know, we've got the property under lease, we've got an operator, we've got a user for twenty five Wharf Street. And then what we've done at forty one Wharf Street is effectively, you know, the public parking is going to remain public parking, that, you know, the access to the parking and the access to this ramp is going to remain. But we've carved out two parcels. Basically, this, you know, I'll try to draw a little rectangle here to kind of show you. You know, we've kind of taken this and divided it in half. I think it's five thousand feet apiece. It's like a full ten thousand foot parcel. So, and we've basically, we're putting all of those out to bid effectively. So twenty five Wharf Street, you know, here, which again, you know, is not the whole thing, but it's basically operating out of the lockup. And then this kind of parcel, I think we're calling parcel A. And then these two parcels down here. So, you know, there's, there's, there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of kind of thought put into this. And I think, you know, what we're trying to do is, you know, Milton Landing has been the yacht club for a long time. And I think that, you know, the thinking of the landing committee and kind of, you know, this RFP is that, not that we want the yacht club to go anywhere necessarily, but we want to bring other people down to the landing. And, you know, there could be good opportunities, like as I mentioned before, for, you know, a canoe and kayak operator or for some other type of waterfront type use to kind of set up some type of operation down here, or perhaps even in the lockup building, depending on how the bids come in. But, you know, we definitely want to have, have users down there under lease so that everyone understands the terms and that everyone's paying the right amount of rent and everyone's kind of protected, you know, by a lease. And kind of use that as an opportunity to bring some other users down here. You know, they, they just had a bidder's conference this morning. I wasn't in the office, so I don't know who showed up to that, but we can get you an update on that. But that RFP is out there on the street. If you know anyone that, you know, wants to lease a piece of the waterfront, they're certainly, you know, able to get that RFP and put a bid package together. But I think, you know, kind of what we're thinking about is, you know, there's a long term future for the landing that may include, you know, again, additional dock facilities, you know, we're not talking about development down here for many reasons. But I think in terms of, you know, different facilities, you know, we're still engaging in that planning process to determine that. But in the meantime, you know, in the sort of near to medium term future, you know, we want to bring people down to the, down to the landing, show them, you know, what a tremendous asset this is. It's, you know, it's your access to Dorchester Bay and Boston Harbor. You know, you can, you can really do a lot down here, so. Yeah, we can, we can definitely give you an update on, you know, how that RFP works out. I don't know exactly what the deadlines are. I think it's kind of in November, bids are due. But, you know, we can definitely kind of keep you posted on that. And if you've got any additional questions about kind of what's in it, or kind of what exactly, you know, we're looking for, it's, it's a relatively open ended RFP. You know, again, because we really want to see what's out there and kind of gauge the interest of, you know, that, that kind of, you know, waterfront community. You know, and kind of see, you know, what the possibilities are and doing a procurement process is a good way to figure that out and kind of figure out what the demand is. So I will, I will pause.
And I think Sean has his hand up for a question.
Tim, with regard to that structure, that ten thousand square foot structure, is there any restrictions on what it could be?
I would, I would have to double check on the RFP.
Okay.
Literally, the next thing that I was going to talk about is related to the lockup building. So I may be able to answer some of those questions, you know, with that. But in fact, let me, let me, let me continue, because I think it'll be, it'll be useful to kind of join these two conversations. Let me go back to my Google map. So the second to last thing that we've got going on is, you know, this is just a street view. This is the lockup building. I don't, I don't know if, Meredith, off the top of your head, do you know the square footage on this? I don't think it's ten thousand feet.
But it's. No, 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 it's much smaller.
Yeah.
It's, gosh.
But it's, you know, it's, it's a little building. It's the headquarters of the Milton Yacht Club right now. But, but again, this building, town's first police station. Meredith, is the, is the jail cell still in there? That could be a.
The jail bars are still there, yes.
Okay, so that's like a creepy little artifact. So the yacht club has been headquartered here for some time. This is, it's a town owned building, but I don't think that it has been, you know, kept up and maintained by the town in the same way that perhaps the schools or town hall have. For a number of reasons and one of the being, you know, being as old as it is and as kind of consequential of historic asset as it is. You can't just sort of go in there and start, you know, hammering things in. So one thing that we're doing, and we used funds through the, we have a Milton Landing revolving fund. You know, the rents from this building actually go into that fund. We used a few bucks out of that to retain a firm that does sort of investigations in buildings to kind of determine, you know, the status of the structure and kind of start to give us a good idea of kind of what type of work needs to be done, you know, from a historic preservation perspective. We know kind of, you know, just as a little house in terms of the roof, in terms of the plumbing, in terms of, you know, all of that, as a building, we kind of know what kind of work needs to be done. And then you join that knowledge with, well, here are the kind of historic components of this, and this is the type of, you know, type of fixtures that you're going to need to do. And this is the type of, you know, work that you're going to need to do to make sure you preserve the brickwork and then make sure everything is kind of up to, you know, that kind of standard of historic preservation. So we've got that and the landing committee has actually submitted a CPA application under the sort of component of CPA to get some money to do that work. I have a, I have this, a kind of a scope and a kind of a cost breakdown. I can share that with planning board if they're interested, but the landing committee, and I know the historical commission is also interested in this.
I believe Steve McDonald also submitted.
Yeah. So, so Meredith, I think, I think the CPA committee is probably going to consider those jointly.
Yeah.
You know, just because the, the, the landing committee kind of on behalf of the select board, which the owner of the building is probably the proper applicant, but
Definitely.
We're hand in glove with, with the historical commission on this stuff. It's a historic asset. We want to make sure that it's maintained and kind of is, is kind of fixed up to the standards of, you know, habitability and usability, but also, you know, historic. So Sean, to your question, in terms of, you know, restrictions on, you know, what can be there? One thing that I will say is a constraint that we have is the sewer system for this building. There's, there's a, I think there might be a kitchen, but there's a bathroom with a sink and a toilet. That actually ties into the sewer pump that eighty eight Wharf ties into, which is kind of underground somewhere around here, but basically pumps the sewage up the hill. And it goes wherever it needs to go. So there is a constraint on the use. So regardless of kind of the interior condition of what's, you know, what we want to do again, in the sort of medium to long term is, you know, get in there and fix it up and make sure that, you know, people that are operating out of there are safe and warm and dry and everything like that. But, you know, without, without upgrading that sewer pump, which my understanding, and this is based on kind of testimony from the kind of minimum association, you know, that, that pump is kind of at the capacity that it's going to be at. And so anything beyond, you know, that type of use where, you know, you've got a single toilet and, you know, maybe one or two sinks, there would need to be upgrades to that pump. And so, you know, we may be, we may, we may decide at some time in the future, like, yeah, we really want some type of, you know, food and beverage concession here, which would probably have greater, you know, sewage and wastewater needs than, than just, you know, a yacht club headquarters or something like that. We may make that decision down the line, but, you know, we would need to kind of figure out, okay, how do we, how do we upgrade that sewage infrastructure? So I think for the time being, you know, without speculating, I'm not a super guy, so I just assume that, you know, a food beverage use has more intensive use than, than, I guess, just headquarters or a meeting space. But we're basically kind of constrained by the existing kind of fixtures, or at least these types of fixtures that are in there right now. And then, you know, aside from that, you know, really does depend on kind of what we see. You know, you can probably use your imagination about, you know, what, what kind of users could go in there. But I'm not aware of any other restrictions. That's not a guarantee that there aren't any, but it really is kind of the physical condition of the space and then the capacity of the sewage facilities. Cheryl has her.
Yes. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Thank you. I will check out the RFP, but one of the things that I am thinking about is if there's multiple users, will there need to be at least restroom facilities, you know, for those uses? And how that might work. But the other thing that, especially with the historic building, is sea level rise. You know, I've been at the Wharf, it's a flood plain to certain portions. I'm not sure it reaches building at this time, but you know, with predictions, it's rising. I mean, Boston's actually studying, I think Dorchester, this section pretty close to here. Is this something where we need to look at how to protect the building from any kind of flood protection, sea level rise? I'd hate to see a lot of investment preserving the building and then have it be flooded on a regular basis. So it's just not necessarily something to answer tonight, just a couple of things I was thinking about that I throw out to you, Tim.
I have made that note. I think you're absolutely right. And I think there's, you know, the broader, the broader project of, you know, what is the, you know, what type of work needs to be done down here? You know, whether it's, you know, you know, softening the water's edge or kind of reinvesting in a sea wall, or maybe raising that up or, or, you know, there's all sorts of interventions that we need to study. But I think, you know, ultimately, what we're trying to do is, you know, protect this area and make sure that it's usable, you know, and not kind of flooded and inundated. And I think that obviously extends to, you know, to the lockup building. I'll have to look at the, at the flood maps and the topography and see exactly kind of what the threat is. I mean, there is, you know, there is a little bit of slope between here and there, but, you know, I could be a bad judge of this stuff sometimes. I think like, oh, it's a couple of feet up and it's like, no, 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 it's underwater. So we'll definitely, we'll definitely look into that. And that'll definitely be, you know, a component of kind of the engineering aspect of the project. The last thing that we have, and again, I may have, you know, mentioned this in in a previous update, but I'll go into it in slightly more detail now, is a a grant that we got through the Seaport Economic Council, which is a division of, it's coastal zone management at the state. But, but that sort of, you know, is interested in, in, in helping out, you know, waterfront communities, you know, have, you know, viable water fronts and, you know, they do a lot of work in Cluster, they do a lot of work in New Bedford, they do a lot of work in, you know, Salem and City of Boston. They have a dredging program, both for design and permitting and then implementation. You know, so that port facilities, waterfront facilities, you know, can continue to be operational. You know, their boats bottoming out. So we have, you know, in partnership with City of Quincy, we received a seventy five thousand dollar design and permitting grant to investigate dredging the Nippon's River, basically from Milton Landing up the river to the Nippon's Bridge. And then some other dredging activity between Squatom Point and Columbia Point and Commercial Point over here. There is a, I keep on clicking, there is a federal navigable channel that kind of starts at the Nippon's Bridge over here and kind of goes out to Dorchester Bay. So, you know, the feds will periodically dredge that channel. But upstream of the Nippon's Bridge is, is all kind of local. So we originally kind of, you know, the notion that we originally had was, well, you know, if you've ever been down here, you know that at high tide, I mean, your boat's effectively on land. You know, you can only get in and out of Milton Landing at high tide because, you know, silt has built up over the course of years. And so we thought, you know, if we want to do anything beyond what we're doing, and even to make what we're doing now, you know, out of the yacht club, you know, better and easier for those members, you know, we're going to need to dredge, you know, some of, some from some of the landing area. And that kind of, you know, ballooned into, and this is in discussions we had with the Economic Council, is like, yeah, we think this project's great, but you're not thinking big enough. And so that's, that's when we started to zoom out and say like, well, you know, if, if, if we can dredge here, you know, if we can dredge all the way out, now we're talking, you know, now we're really talking about getting out the Dorchester Bay and points beyond. So we work with City of Quincy on this application. We also consulted with City of Boston. We didn't, we didn't get a formal letter of support for them in time to get the application in. There was a mayoral transition. We had three mayors in the course of a short period of time. So it was tough to kind of get them formally on board, but we talked, you know, extensively with their waterfront planning division. division and their environment department. And everyone thinks this is a great, you know, potential project. Involves a lot of research. This being an area of critical environmental concern, you're really, they really don't like you dredging in that area, you know, so there's not like, it's not a situation where you can just go and do whatever you want. But you are allowed to do what's called maintenance dredge. And so if there's a historical dredged channel, you can maintain that channel. There is history of dredging in this portion of the river. We do have evidence of a historical channel. I think it was last dredged in like 1983. The documentation that kind of formalized the area of critical environmental concern, contemplates that maintenance dredging. So we think we're on good footing in terms of being able to sort of do this. The other, you know, the other kind of piece of this is, and as everyone is aware of, the Superfund designation, which applies to the Deposit River from the Baker Chocolate Bridge, the Baker Chocolate Dam, excuse me, right over here, upstream to, or down, now upstream to Mother Brook, just a history of pollution PCBs, deadly poison in the river. It's a super fun site. The dam does an okay job of kind of keeping all that stuff back. It's actually, you know, a huge concern, you know, the condition of those dams and, you know, the potential for dam removal. What do you do with all the poison chemicals that are kind of behind them? But, you know, this portion of the river is not kind of subject to that designation, because the dam does an okay job of kind of, you know, keeping that stuff back. But water is water. Those chemicals have been there for decades. There has been, you know, leaching, you know, over the dam. And so a big part of this project is figuring out, what do we do with the dredge material? We've done sampling and testing. We're pretty confident that, you know, at least some of the material is compromised. If you had clean, 100% clean material, you could basically, you can dump it wherever you wanted. A lot of things, a lot of times, you know, what people will do is use dredge material, you know, just like, you know, we did when we capped, you know, the golf course or when we built Back Bay, you take dredge material and you sort of create land with it. Or you just put it, you know, on land and it dries out and just becomes part of, you know, part of the landscape. You can only do that with clean material. And, you know, there's a lot of compromised material, a lot of places. And so, you know, there are other methods of disposing of that. There are facilities kind of out in the middle of the ocean that sometimes you can do. And then, you know, there's, you just ship it offsite and you put it in a landfill somewhere. These are probably all more expensive than options that you have with clean fill. But, you know, part of the project right now that our engineering consultant is kind of working with is, what do you call it? Is figuring out where to sort of dump that material and getting the proper permits to do that. Our consultant is working on that. And, you know, basically, the product that they're going to produce, you know, hopefully by the end of the year, is a kind of a plan to implement this dredging project. So they're consulting with Mass DEP, with EPA, with all of the various state and federal regulatory agencies on kind of what the permitting processes would look like. And what we're hoping is, in a future grant funding round, to be able to get some implementation funds from the Seaport Economic Council and kind of see where, you know, what we can get out of that and then kind of have the conversation with our partners in Quincy and City of Boston and kind of fill in whatever gaps need to be filled. The benefits of this project, if we can get a channel dredge, are numerous. One that's really important is, from a public safety perspective, the City of Quincy Marine Unit is kind of the folks that patrol the Nippon City River. So if folks fall in the water or fall off the bridge or something happens, the Quincy Police Boat is out there responding. Just like your pleasure boat at a Milton Landing, you know, if it's high tide, you can't get out. If someone falls in the river at high tide, you know, those police boats have a really tough time getting out to respond to emergencies. So having a full time navigable channel has really significant public safety benefits. The other thing, you know, recreationally, again, existing users down here, you know, can kind of get in and out of a navigable channel at any time of the tide cycle. If in the future, we ever wanted to run, you know, charter boats, or if anyone wanted to bring a boat down and use our public docks, maybe able to get in without having to kind of, you know, monitor, you know, aggressively what the tide schedule is. And then from a kind of a public transportation perspective, one thing that the City of Quincy is really interested in is they have a ferry that runs out of Squanton Point that goes from Squanton Point up to the Seaport. They put a road for it, I don't know exactly, but it goes to downtown Boston and then out to, that's real MBTA ferry service. They would love to have, you know, that channel kind of, you know, firmed up to get to the federal channel out here so that they have a kind of a long-term future for the service. If we can operate, you know, a water taxi out of Milton Landing to get people, you know, to Squanton Point, that's just one more option, you know, for people to get downtown, you know, either to get to work or to get downtown for whatever kind of, you know, cultural or recreational or whatever opportunities they want. You know, in addition to obviously the trolley and the bus service that runs through Milton Landing. So couldn't run a full blown ferry out of Milton Landing, there's not the demand for that. And also, the river, you know, isn't really deep enough. But if you get a smaller boat, you know, out to Marina Bay, Squanton Point, you know, it's a really viable transportation option. You know, City of Boston has a lot of development going on on Morrissey Boulevard, at Columbia Point, may have similar kind of designs on kind of water transportation. Really exciting project and really, you know, hopefully, we can get it to work out, you know, once we have a kind of a finished product from our engineering firm, we'll have a much better idea of kind of what it takes to get it done, you know, from both the cost and the kind of coordination perspective.
Tim, that's great. Thank you so much for that. That was something that we've all been wanting to hear an update on. And I know there's good work being happening there. So please keep us posted. And if there's anything we can do, you know, certainly let us know. But that's great. Thank you. Any questions regarding anything else to add on that? Yes, Maggie, sorry.
So no, I don't have any questions, but I'm wondering if I could ask something under new business?
Certainly, yes.
So I wanted to know if we can visit our tree protection and preservation guidelines? It's my understanding, as I was watching the Conservation Commission, meaning the other night, that they've had a recent change to their tree replacement policy. And I thought that maybe we should review their policy and see if it's something we should consider adopting. I think it would be a good practice for the town to have consistent policies throughout and across all of our boards. And also, while watching the ZBA hearings, they sort of have questioned our recommendations and the size of plant material we've suggested. And so I kind of think it would be helpful to the ZBA if they could reference our policies as well. And in fact, I think it might be helpful if, at the start of every project, either 40B or a special permit project, that our tree and landscape policy could be given out to the developers, so they would know what's expected of them. And then that way, we just save so much time going back and forth, you know, with the developer and with neighbors.
Great suggestion. Yeah. It's definitely something we can put on the agenda for a future meeting. Good. Okay. Anything else, Tim? Did you have anything else under old business that we're?
Not on the landing.
Okay, great. So then we can move on to, I know, I don't know if you've had time. I put this on because I just don't want us to forget about it, because we've put the update on our cut and fill bylaw amendment as a priority. I don't know if Cheryl or Sean, if you've had time to look at anything or?
I have not yet, Meredith.
Okay, that's all right. I just, I put it on there as a placeholder, just so we keep, we don't forget. And, you know, I, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I didn't bother with the raised hand for this. Sorry. Tim, if you could send out those model bylaws that you found. And if you could send to Sean that Franklin Development Guide, I think it was, that we have been looking at when you and Denny and I were working on the tree revisions last year, we were talking about cut and fill. Just so you know, we were speaking also with Joe Krendak and Marina Fernandez, the town engineer, because the cut and fill impacts their work as well. And so maybe what we can do, Tim, is reconvene the group. We'll bring Sean in now.
Yeah, so one, and I'll definitely do that. One notion that I had, I may have mentioned this at a previous staff update, is the engineering department is working with the Ponset River Water Association to evaluate our regulations relative to not just stormwater, but kind of site disturbance and pervious surface and everything like that. And the engineering department has actually put together a pretty good report on all of the different kind of regulatory items, you know, whether it's zoning or planning board regulations, kind of that have an effect on stormwater quality. And, you know, I think that may be a good vehicle to start to think about, you know, not just trying to kind of wrap our hands around cut and fill, but like, you know, what are we actually trying to get after, which is kind of site disturbance and limiting that, and tree preservation, which the stormwater folks are also very interested in. And, you know, again, reducing impervious surface on sites that are newly developed. So the environmental coordinator has put together a pretty good, pretty good report on that. So I may also send around, you know, before we get into kind of model bylaws, if I send those materials around as a kind of a jumping off point for the working group, because I think it's kind of another way into the process. Because I think, you know, one of the things that we kind of ran into is like, how do we, how do we think about the existing cut and fill bylaw and kind of what tweaks we need? And I think everyone kind of, I had, I had a hard time, my brain turned to soup kind of thinking about it. So I think a different angle may be, maybe a good way to get after the same, the same information. I will, I will send all that stuff around. And then maybe, yeah, you know, Cheryl, Sean, and myself and engineering can probably get together and kind of talk it through.
Yeah, one thing I would say is that Joe Krendak had definitely had some ideas since he was the enforcement officer, he decides whether a permit is required for cut and fill. And so some things he felt as if could be more clear and at least more clear in the current bylaw, in terms of when it's triggered. But we were talking about what level of cut and fill, how to define that, and, you know, what in terms of quantity of cut, quantity of fill. So I would like to make sure that Joe's in the loop, Tim.
Absolutely.
Great. Good. Thank you all. That, I think we can keep that moving too. Our next item on the agenda is old business. This is really housekeeping, because we've already, I think discussed this multiple times, but that we do need to reappoint or to discuss Cheryl, we've already discussed Tabor, Keely, and Dick Burke. We actually did take a formal vote already on Roxanne, so we don't need to, that's, we've done that already. But yes, so just the reappointment of the other three current members. Is there a motion?
I know that we've talked about this before, I'm not sure. Sorry, I think I'm losing my voice. I keep doing this little clearing of my throat. But I'm just to be clear, I know Roxanne was voted, but was that, was her term up in July as well? So was it only a short term and then it had to be appointed again?
No, they, I think, and I, I'll have to reach out to find out exactly what her term. I know, I think there was a meeting that she was appointed, and then she didn't attend. There was a first meeting maybe in July that she was not there. My understanding, the Select Board made the appointments for the next three, but it sounded like her term was a fiscal through next summer. So she's on, she's like on Elaine, like they're on a different schedule than the other members. And actually, the Select Board, they just made their, the appointments at their last meeting for yourself, Tabor, and Dick. And those are for a year appointment. So technically, it would be a year from.
Today.
So it's, yeah, so everyone, it's.
I mean, you don't necessarily have to do that. You could, you could appoint them to June 30th, you know, if you wanted to, to keep it nice and clean. It's really.
I think, yeah, so the Select Board, it's already voted. If they had done it through the end of June, I know, I didn't speak to Arthur on that before he did that vote. But yes, so since they did it for one year, it was sort of the same what happened with Elaine, they just, it was a year. And same with Roxanne. So it's not the end of the world. We can, you know, address that if the future, if we want to try to get back on that schedule. But for now, this would be a one-year appointment in conjunction with the Select Board.
Can I make a motion to appoint Tabor, Keely, and Dick Burke? That's the two that we need to do, right?
And actually, yourself, just to make, just to make everybody, we've, we had voted on you before, but now we sort of have to be in line with the vote on the Select Board. Yeah.
All right. Yeah, because we just approved the minutes where I was voted in before. But if that's what we need to do, then I'll let somebody else make the motion rather than.
Yeah, we'll just follow the Select Board's lead on that, so we're consistent. Yeah. So can I have, is there a motion? Sean or Maggie?
Sure. I'll make the motion to appoint all three. Tabor, Dick, and Cheryl.
And I second that.
Great. Okay, roll call. Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. We will let the Select Board's office know that is all set. And, Tim, I don't know if there's any update. I'm not sure that there is, you know, the soon on the update on the zoning recodification, but again, keeping our priorities just on the agenda.
Yeah, I was hoping to get an email from Sue Galvin that I would be able to pass along, but I don't think that came in. I did, I did have a conversation with her yesterday. She's been in touch with General Code, our consultant of this. They, they were able to negotiate a very fair price for the work that Sue's office is going to cover. And so, as we kind of, kind of talked through maybe a few meetings ago, maybe it was the last meeting, I don't know, time is a flat circle these days. We are going to provide General Code with the 2009 zoning bylaw, as it appears on the Town Clerk's website, plus every amendment that's been made since then. They're going to re sort of do their manuscript and their editorial legal analysis. And we're hoping to get that product in by January, or at least end of December, beginning of January, at which point Sue's intention is to work with Town Council on, you know, basically doing that work in the editorial and legal analysis and having a sort of a package to give, you know, to the planning board to kind of figure out, you know, is this something that we want to go forward with the annual? Or is there other work that needs to be done? But effectively, you know, at a staff level, doing the work with General Code and then providing a final product to the planning board, you know, to make a decision. I think the role of the bylaw review committee in this is kind of, you know, TBD. But I think, you know, Sue's office has gotten the ball rolling with General Code to kind of dial that step back and then get a copy of the manuscript going forward. So she's got it under control. And if there's any news, she'll definitely kind of inform me. But I think until General Code kind of gets that work done, we're just kind of playing wait and see.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Tim on that? Yes, Cheryl?
So, Tim, I imagine that Sue. So, Tim, I imagine that Sue is making General Code aware of town council's advice about how it needs to be, everything needs to be clear to town meeting members in terms of, and if they renumber anything or something like that, or if they find a typo or something in the existing code, right? She's made them aware. Okay, just wanted to be sure, thanks.
Great. Okay, now, Tim, we, the MBTA Communities Multifamily Zoning, that's a presentation, but I do know there are some folks on, and I just don't want to keep them on, you know, on the meeting, for 193 Central, is it possible to move that in advance of the MBTA presentation, just so they can?
You're awesome, Meredith, I think that's a fine idea.
I do see there's a few people and I just want to offer opportunity for, for the neighbors of 193 to speak. And we, you did put in the file the new updated landscape plan. Yep, there we go. And so it was brought to my attention by one of the abutters at the rear of the property, that there really is not any, there's no tree buffer between the Goddard School and the house. If you're looking, if you're on Columbine Road, the house to the left. And my, and I went back and I checked, I double-checked our minutes. Actually, there were two sets of minutes when, when Marion came before us. And my understanding is those, the black tupuloes, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that they were supposed to be in the rear, where they, I know there's trees that were going to be taken down in that area, but the tupelo trees, and we refer to it twice, where we say, "three large trees, fifteen feet in height in the back of the property and one in the front." And so I understand the concern and maybe I was misunderstood, but I thought those tupelo trees, we were concerned with the buffer and that the trees are large enough that they sort of, they buffer the, the, the school from, from the house, the home's property. And I just thought we would want to talk about that, there might be some other folks who want to address that. But, but obviously, nothing's been planted, so Cheryl, I see your hand up and Maggie. So I just thought we would have that discussion and allow any of the neighbors to speak up to.
One thing I wanted to mention is that the stormwater drainage system chambers are underground. That's that light gray rectangle at the rear. So I want to, you can't have the roots of a tree expand into that system or it'll damage the system. So I wonder whether I support the idea that trees be a buffer. I just wonder if that would need to be a different tree then, if we're going to locate anything that's near those storm drainage structures. And maybe it's more a, I know there's other things, but arborvitae's, but there could be other things. And if maybe someone could take a, an arborist or a landscape architect, or Maggie could take a look at what might not grow into that, you know, distance to that structure is not very, it's not a large distance, so it would have to be something, whether a root structure stayed fairly compact.
No, that's, that's definitely a good, a good point. Maggie, what?
Yeah, so I have a question. I thought what we voted on was not to amend any of the existing landscaping plan that was pre-approved. We only voted on the trees that they proposed in removing. So I thought that those three trees in the back were for the replacement of the dying pine tree that was supposed to have been protected. So I thought according to the plan, the previous approved plan, which was, you know, before I got on the board, as you can see behind the blue, you have the circles. I thought, and if Tim scrolls down on the plant list, I thought those were new trees that were going to get planted for the protection to that need. That the three additional trees were only to replace the one pine that they failed to protect. Right here, so it says eight white spruces.
Right.
So we never discussed any white spruces being removed from the plan.
Correct. That, that's why I think Tim even noticed there was some inconsistency with the planting list and with the landscape.
But we didn't even look at the planting list, because I would have known the fact that they have listed five gallon lavender, which I don't think they'll ever be able to find. But, um, so I'm not really sure. I'm not, I'm not sure. We didn't look at any of this pre-approved planting list.
Yeah. Tim, have you been in contact with Marion at all on this, other than her sending?
No.
Okay.
I haven't. She, she, she sent it to me, she said, and unfortunately, I wasn't at the meeting on the eighth where this was discussed, but she said that it was, it was consistent with what the board approved. It's just the date needed to be changed, and that was the last part of it. But, I mean, it's, I, I kind of, I would love to have a little bit more context for, you know, why this white spruce is circled, but it's not, white spruce is not supposed to be a replacement for anything. You know, because I know this was the issue, this guy was the issue, this guy was the issue, and this guy was the issue. And there's no, you know, I just, oh, sorry.
Maybe we can, you know, I want, I definitely would like for some of the neighbors to speak, but maybe we could invite Marion to come back and maybe discuss somehow, providing, I know they want to be a good neighbor. I do believe that the developer has the good intentions to work with the, with the neighborhood and to see if there's a way that, a cost-effective way to provide some buffering. Cheryl?
Yes, Tim, can you send us or put in the folder the approved landscape and storm drainage plan for this, so that we can just be sure that we're looking at what is different on here versus what was approved in that original permit? And that's like kind of approval, I should say. And then if we have the date for that, we could go back and check the minutes on the discussion of that area. I was on the board then, but my memory isn't that good to remember every discussion.
Right.
But, Tim, if you could just, could you move this up so we can see this? What are these, do these, what are these trees up at the top here? I mean, I, I sort of thought that the trees shown as approximate, so I counted three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and that corresponds to the eight white spruces. So I assumed those were eight white spruces, even though they weren't marked on the plan.
I don't, yeah, Maggie, I don't think that's it. The CBS trees, they're, they're on the right-hand side of the property as you look at the plan. So then they're, yeah, scroll, what we see right there, see this CBS is right?
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that.
Yeah, it's just so, you know.
The trees in the back are all existing, at least they were.
Yeah. Yeah, Tim, everything that's clouded on this plan, with the exception of the change on the planting schedule, everything else is consistent with what was discussed in the meeting. My recollection, but, you know, my thought was the same as yours, Cheryl. If we could see the approved plan, we could at least recognize what's changed on the planting list. What was that CBS previously? You know?
But my recollection too is, is for recent recollection, it's consistent with Maggie's, is that we were only discussing trees that were being added due to loss of existing trees. That there was no other change in the, in the approved plan.
I agree.
It's just that I don't recall whether there was something shown on that, next to that drainage on the original.
I do think it's unfortunate if those neighbors are now feeling a bit exposed.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm not sure.
I do remember when the, their very early conversations, there was some discussion about maybe some Green Giant, you know, arborvitae's are doing something along, along their property line, but it did not get put into the plan. So I, I do want to see if there's an opportunity, if there's anything that we can do to.
So, Meredith, are you suggesting we consider, instead of the three trees that were a replacement, to consider something as a buffer? And so that it kind of serves a different purpose, but it would provide that kind of screening that they're desiring?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's, yeah, if they would be open to that, it might be a fair, a fair trade. I mean, I like.
I think we did leave it open as to the final location. I don't think we said it had to be exactly that location, so I do think we would have it within at least a request to them, you know, to. And I think we even said some flexibility in the species depending upon availability. So hopefully, they would be open to something like that adjustment that you're talking about.
And the timeframe that they were talking about planting was spring of 2023 anyway? So we have time to have that discussion.
So, so just to be clear, and I can communicate with, with Marion and the development team about this. We're, we're talking about back here, this, your property line as some sort of, you know, buffer. So, I mean, we, so, so the question is like, you know, these trees are meant to kind of equal this big guy. But maybe like if you can't have three big trees back here, I mean, is this?
Right.
You know, what, what's the trade, I guess?
And, and part of the discussion, and I'm not speaking for the neighbors, but what, one of the concern was that they didn't realize the grade change, that it basically, it's almost the, it's like a five foot height, the height change. So they were concerned about fencing too, that would, would a six-foot fence now be enough? You know, so I, whatever we could do to help back there, I think, I think that would be, I think that would be really good and helpful to that neighbor.
I'll, I'll reach out to Marion and see what she comes back with.
That would be great, that would be great. And are there any, oh, I do see Helen Russell has her hand up. Helen, if we can let Helen in?
Hello, everyone.
Welcome, Helen.
Thank you.
Can you give your address, please, just for?
Yes, 190 Central at the foot of the new entrance for the.
Thank you.
Goddard School. I have been talking to the Atwoods there away, or one of the abutting neighbors, and I think that would be a welcome solution. You know, I recall at the earlier meetings, most of our concerns in the neighborhood were really around the size of the project, that it was so much bigger. And in truth, as it's now looming in, out all of our front windows, it is really very large. And I recognize there's not much we can do about that. But I do recall that when we were talking about the berm that's going to be facing Central Ave to kind of cover the parking spaces, the 30 parking spaces. I distinctly remember hearing that there would be mature plantings on that berm. And I went and got a look at the, both the revised landscape plan and the old one. And the things that are going in there, you know, are not terribly impressive. Boxwood, and I see mountain laurel, and I see maiden grass. And unless it's grass from Jurassic Park, I don't think it's going to do much to really change the scale, the scale and the scope as it's facing both the street and, and our house. And I just did want to add that the trees in back that you were wondering about in that back corner are actually all kind of scraggly Norway maples. So they don't have much leafing, really, because they were in the middle of a forested area. So they really were kind of deep shade trees. So there's not much that they offer. It just seems to me that, you know, as we're bringing in a corporation, which really the Goddard School is, that in order to be a good neighbor, it would just be great to spend a fraction of the total cost of the project to help those of us that really are facing the school and the immense traffic that it will produce, just to try to help mitigate some of the largeness of the project. And I think that primarily, you know, falls really on, I mean, I haven't spoken to everyone that abuts the school, but certainly I know for the neighbors in the back and for us, it's a big, it's going to be, I mean, literally that driveway going in with 120 cars in and out twice a day is at the foot of our driveway. So it is, I mean, nothing we can do about that, I realize. But it would be great to have some nice, you know, evergreens, something that really is going to give us a little bit of greenery to break up the scale. So thank you, and thanks.
Yeah, let's see what we can do about that.
Yeah, I was sort of thinking, Meredith, what might be nice, again, allowing some flexibility in the landscape plan. You know, maybe talk to Mrs. McGetrick. As I said, I think in their plan, they have these five gallon lavenders, which aren't really going to do anything, and the ornamental grasses won't provide any coverage throughout the winter, because you cut them straight back down to the ground. So, you know, I know, just through going through the process of getting an occupancy permit, Krendak is going to have to look at the landscape plan. But maybe Mrs. McGetrick and Joe could talk, and maybe there could be some sort of flexibility and change of material. And maybe fewer, the quantity should be fewer, but the material should be larger. So it kind of goes back to what I was sort of saying with the whole ZBA projects. They were proposing, you know, three gallon plants, which three gallon plants will do nothing. You know, they really need to start at, you know, three and four foot size for shrubs. And, and I don't think there's much of a cost difference, because you're using fewer of them and you're starting off bigger, and I think it will provide more, a much better barrier for the neighbors.
Yeah, thank you. Cheryl, you have your hand up, and we have another.
Yes, I guess my, just to the comment about whether some of the plantings could be different. I think, you know, if there's a willingness on the applicant's part to consider swapping out some materials like the prior speaker had suggested, and as Maggie suggested, I would hope that the applicant in spirit of being a good neighbor would be willing to consider that. But I do want the members of the public who are here to understand that they, they do have their approval on that landscape plan. And so we'll have to, we can reach out to them to appeal to their good side. But if you would do the same, I think that's the way we're going to get some of these things that you suggest accomplished.
Thank you. We have a member of the public, Bill Zucker. If we can invite Bill to come and speak.
Thank you, yeah. My name's Bill Zucker. I live at Nate Ruggles Lane, excuse me, that's my dog. He decided to move off my lap. I live at Nate Ruggles Lane, which is essentially right opposite. I think the comment that I'd like to agree with from Helen is that the project, although the project supposedly, as it was represented, would have the same square footage as the old Milton Club, the design of the building and the fact that it is raised up makes the, makes the building much larger in scope on the same piece of land. It is, it is a very large building. And, and my memory of the discussion was that. Was that the screening, it was going to be well screened. That was the representation that was being made by the developer. And the, what's being proposed is not well screened. And, and I, I, while I can't get into, I can't share. Quite the same detail as Maggie and Cheryl with respect to their memories. I, I, I'm, 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 uh, heartened by the fact, at least Maggie's memory. Is that what was approved was the removal of certain trees, not the actual planting. And if there is an opportunity for the board to put more pressure on the developer. So that we actually do have a well screened, uh, uh, s- school or daycare center. It would really be appreciated by the community.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? I don't see any other, oh, Jenny, um, I don't know if you have your hand. Up to speak also?
I do, I do. I don't know if it's helpful to reiterate what folks say, but just to say, sorry, Jenny Russell, one ninety central. With Helen, but I'm in a different place right now, but just, uh, ditto what Bill and Helen have said. And just to emphasize the fact that the pictures that we saw originally of this, sort of the, not the. The drawings that you just showed, but the pictures showed a much more mature growth. In front and on the side of the school. So it feels like this is a little switch and bait a little bit about. What to be, uh, expected. And I remember actually asking specifically, are those mature? And, um, the answer was yes, but what we're seeing in the plan is in fact, they're not mature, what's going in there. So I just want to. Acknowledge the fact that there is a difference of what is, what was initially imagined versus what is actually planned. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. And hopefully we can move to a, a resolution on this that, that we can all agree to. But Sean, yes.
Mike, I appreciate the comments of all the residents, certainly the people that are rebutting when near, near rebutters to the property. My only, uh, comment, Meredith, is I, this has been discussed. I think in probably four meetings, I've lost track of how many times this has been discussed. I think we should. You know, work to bring this one to a close, you know, as soon as we can. And maybe Marion has to come back with Sonny, the applicant and then discuss this. Uh, I, I don't know what limits we have in, in terms of what the residents have, have mentioned this evening. But, you know, certainly with respect to the issue that came before us, which was that tree that was damaged as a result of the excavation. The root structure was harmed and the tree failed. And the, the conversation we had was what was fair? You know, what was a fair replacement for a mature tree? And, and I think that's, that's really one of the things that we should come back to with, uh. With that discussion and make sure that the residents are. Compensated fairly for a tree that if it was not. Going to survive the work, the board should have had, the applicant should have been back before the board to. Represent the issue that they had and, and discussed it before the tree was, was harmed. So, uh, I, I guess just. Two points. One is that we should, we should bring this to a conclusion. It's, uh, it's had, it's had a long life. And, uh, and I, I don't know what we can do with respect to the questions that have been raised, but certainly if we can, we should.
Yeah. Okay. There is anyone else? I don't see any. Helen, oh, no, she, her hand's down. So, um, I think that is it for. Sean, your hands down. Okay, good. All right. Um, so Tim, you can reach out to Marion, um, you know, and maybe this is a, um. You know, not something that's complicated, um, but more of just, we look at it, maybe some different materials along that, that buffer and. What they might be willing to do, given that we have, they do have a special permit, you know, we, we've given that to them. So. But, but I know they do want to be a good neighbor and so hopefully we can have resolution. Good. And should I have any, if somebody reaches out to me, have them talk to you, uh, Tim, and you can put, maybe Marion can speak to them directly too. Okay, that's great. All right. So now moving on, um, to, I just, you know, this is an initial discussion. Of the MBTA Communities, uh, Multifamily Zoning, um, and just starting to think about. What this might look like.
Yeah. So at, at the last meeting where we discussed this, um. One of the, one of the requests of the board was, you know, we've been talking a lot about kind of abstract kind of requirements, you know, numbers, twenty-four hundred. Units of zone capacity, fifteen units per acre, fifty acres. Try to start to kind of visualize what this is going to look like, you know, on a, on a plan, um, on a zoning map. And then start to kind of. You know, once you've got that kind of visual cue, you can start to think about, okay, you know, what are our priorities? In terms of, in that, of terms of density, in terms of location, in terms of, you know, all the other kind of considerations. So. You know, this is really like a first stab and I'll kind of explain as we go through kind of what we're able right now to kind of start to, to think about. And we'll probably need a little bit more, um, analysis and, and probably technical help to kind of figure out. So this is really, um. You know, you've got to put ideas out there. Um, and if, if they fly, they fly. And if they don't, then they don't. Um, and so this is really just a way for the board to start to think about the issues. And, and think critically about what your priorities are. And so, um, I'm going to show you some things. You asked me to do it, so I did it. Um, and if it works, great. And if not, you know, we can go in a different direction and, and I'm happy. Any materials or analysis, um, that they feel they need going forward. Um, one thing that I will say is that. One of the only requirements of the, the action plan that the state is going to ask us to provide by the end of January. Is a, a sort of an idea of where generally potential zoning districts could go. My read on that is, you know, they're not looking for, you know, a surveyed line on a plan. They're just basically kind of looking, you know, generally, is it going to go here? Is it going to go here? Is it going to be three sub-districts? Is it going to be one big? So, uh, you know, we do need to start to think about, you know. A general direction, um, but obviously, you know, with, without kind of additional analysis and additional. You know, help, we're not going to be able to kind of come up with, um, the really kind of specific proposals until we're, we're ready to do that. So. I am going to share my screen.
Good question, Tim, in terms of that additional support. I think you mentioned applying for a grant. I was just wondering what the schedule of that grant is.
I am hoping to hear next week, um, whether we got that, that funding or not. I'm, I'm confident. The state has talked a very big game about wanting to help towns financially, um, with kind of doing this work. So, you know, nothing's in the bag in, in, in this, in this game, but I, I would be, I would be surprised if we didn't get anything and it would be. To the extent that a stern phone call from the town planner to DHCD does anything, uh, they would get one. If I, um, because I, I, you know, a lot of folks need the help that we're asking for, um, and they've said that they would give it simple. I'll have an update one way or the other on that, um, you know, at our next meeting, and then we can start to talk about. I've gotten some. Some scopes of work from other towns that have kind of gotten a little bit of a head start on working with firms on, on kind of how to evaluate this stuff. To just kind of help us put together a little bit of a, of our own scope of work so we can, um, you know, get it. My, my thinking would be, you know, the ask I made was for forty thousand dollars. If we use all of that money and use that as kind of like a, a budgetary kind of guide. We would need to solicit three firms. Um, we, we may not need, well, the, the practice would be to solicit three firms. We wouldn't need to do a sort of a full procurement like we're. You know, doing with, uh, with the East Milton RFP, which I think is going to be, uh, greater than fifty thousand dollars. So. There's, there's a little more flexibility and a little bit more kind of speed involved with that. So I will, I will keep you posted on that. And probably that'll be an item for discussion with the next meeting. So let me, I, I, I shared this yesterday, um, but I, I, I do want to take the opportunity to kind of walk through this, um, because. You know, independent of some kind of context and explanation, um, I, I don't want anyone to. To freak out. Uh, so here we go. Just, just to start, um, this is the half mile radius. Around all of our, our T stations. Um, this is a product that's put together by the Mass Housing Partnership. It, it really, you know, they're not full circles because what they do is they try to like, where there's overlap, they try to kind of divide between, you know, but, but generally speaking. This blue area to the south of the river is within the half mile catchment area of, of each of our train stations plus Matipan Station. So that this is kind of when we talk about the, the sort of the transit area, this is the area that we're talking about. So just to, and, and this is, these are slides that I reproduced from, um, from a briefing that I gave to the select board. I may have given a similar presentation to the. The planning board, but you know, just to remember the three variables that we're talking about. The total area of the zoning district has to be at least fifty acres. It has to be capable of producing twenty-four hundred sixty-one units. Zone capacity is a very specific term. Um. It means that, you know, if, if, if you looked at your zoning and every parcel was. Developed to the maximum extent, it would all add up to twenty-four sixty-one. It is not a production mandate. If zero units get produced, we're still in compliance. And, you know, the, the understanding is that, you know, you would, you know. Just like we don't see every, you know, large parcel in town subdivated, subdivided into zoning compliant lots at the same time. You wouldn't get development in a rush at the same time. And we may never develop all of those twenty-four hundred sixty-one units. So. It really is kind of a paper number. Um, and then, you know, the, the reality will bear out, you know, under that zoning. And then the minimum total density of the district is fifteen units per acre. This is a point that I'm going to return to frequently. The trade-offs in terms of density in order to kind of fit in with those variables. So a smaller district. Will require a greater density because not only are you, do you have a minimum size of the district, but that size needs to fit a certain amount of units. So a smaller district needs a bigger density and a larger district needs a smaller density because. By virtue of the fact that you have more parcels to kind of reach that twenty-four sixty-one. So this is, um, this is a little graphic that just kind of shows, you know, on the, you know, on, on the very left is, is, is Milton, single family houses. On the right is Seaport, Fedway, South End, um, you know, mid-rise, um, apartment buildings. And in the middle are, are all of the different housing typologies that you see, um, in, in cities, in inner ring suburbs, in, in other places. That do multifamily housing. So if you wanted to have that smallest district. You would need to have fifty units an acre to get to twenty-four hundred. Fifty times fifty is twenty-five hundred. Um, so maybe. You would need a forty-nine point five, you know. Density. Um, but you know, approximately fifty acres means fifty units an acre. This is what that looks like in different contexts, you know, back day, six story buildings, you know, lot line to lot line for, you know. A mile and a half. All of this, sorry, all of this high rise stuff in San Francisco, some of this like super dense mid-rise stuff. In, in Mountain View, California. A local-ish example is the Legacy at Arlington Center. Um, if you've been, you know, by, um, by Pond, Arlington Center. This is a, not a huge looking building, um, you know, four stories, um, you know, we, we've got stuff like that around. But the, the lot coverage on this is, is tremendous. Um, there's, there's not a lot of open space. It really is packing a lot of. Density onto a single site. This is forty-three units an acre. Um, so you need something slightly denser if you were going to do that, that minimum kind of district. So going up a notch on a bigger district, a seventy-five acre district, now we're talking thirty-three units an acre. This is what that looks like, you know, in different contexts. These are, you know, we don't really have these types of housing. You know, here in, 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 in the greater Boston area, this is actually called a Texas donut. Um, it's got, um, parking underneath it. And it's kind of ringed around parking and a courtyard. Um, a local example is eighty-eight Whorf Street. Um, that's twenty-nine units an acre. That's a five to six story building on a, a decent sized site. Um, it's, it's pretty, it covers the site pretty good, but there is open space around it. So it's not totally kind of cramped in there. If you wanted to get to twenty units an acre, which is again, a smaller density, you would need a bigger district than a hundred and fifty-five acres. So this is what that looks like in different contexts. So you've got these kind of three or five units, small apartment buildings in Cleveland. You've got this kind of, you know. I guess that's a tennis court in there. I don't know, um, in Tampa. Um, I don't think we would do something like that. Three deckers in Dorchester, um, you know, there's a little bit of space between each of these, each of these. You know, that everyone's got a decent sized backyard, um, eighteen point four units per acre. The, the other local example, um, this is actually my neighborhood. Um, you can see my house from here. Um, I won't tell you which one it is. But this is where I live in Dorchester. Um, this is twenty-two units an acre. You can kind of see. You know, the size of these houses, how close they are together. Um, these are all two and three family houses. Um, I think, you know, this little apartment building back here might have six units in it. But this is, this is what you're looking at is two and three family buildings, you know, detached, but, you know, multiple units on each of these. Everyone's got a yard. Most folks have a drive-by. That's twenty-two units an acre. And so finally, if you wanted to achieve the minimum density, so that's, you know. Not going overboard on big buildings, you know, fifteen units an acre is the smallest you can do. You would need to have a hundred and sixty-three acres. Um, and again, that's just math. Hundred sixty-three times fifteen is approximately twenty-four sixty-one. The local example we have is, is right here in Milton, um, Belvoir Road, um, between Blue Hill Ave and Blue Hill Parkway. These are, these are predominantly two family houses. Um, so it wouldn't, something like this wouldn't quite count because. The state defines multifamily as three family or more. But again. We have this density in town. These are all two family houses. Again, you know, how closely are together? You know, little bit of a yard, driveway, little bit of space between, you know, all of them. That exists today at, at, you know, approximately fifteen units per acre. So thi- this is what we've got for sort of visual kind of cues for, for what this stuff means. So try to keep those in mind, and I can refer back to those as we kind of go along. So just the, the real quick disclaimer that, you know, the examples that we're going to show are illustrative of the compliance requirements. These are not all of the possibilities in the town of Milton. Um, technically, there are not an infinite number of options, but. Close to that. Um, and, and I'll explain that in a minute. Um, the requirements that we're dealing with is. And, and this is kind of something that, you know, we're going to have to make a decision on as, as, as a town is. How much of the zoning district are we going to put in that transit area? Are we going to do all of it in that transit area or are we going to spread it around a little bit more? That's a real kind of fundamental gating issue, um, that we're going to need to figure out because if we're talking strictly in that, in that transit area. And that has implications, um, you know, we'll have to work through them, but you know, they're, they're workable. If we're going to spread it around a little bit. At least half of the minimum land area, so whether that's fifty acres or more, half of that has to be in the transit area. And half of the zone capacity has to be in that transit area. So what we're really talking about is, are we putting half of all of this in the transit area? And then half of it elsewhere, or are we putting all of it in the transit area? So again, remember those, those constraints. It's got to be at least fifty acres. It's got to have the capacity to produce at least twenty-four hundred sixty-one units and the minimum density is fifteen units per acre. The, the thing that I want to. Just kind of put to bed right now is we're probably talking about a district that's greater than fifty acres. Because again, in order to have that minimum sized district, your density is fifty units per acre. We don't have anything in town that's fifty units per acre. Um, and, and you have to go kind of elsewhere in city of Boston or maybe Quincy Center to find something that has that density. So. Achieving the minimum zone capacity in the minimum land area, I'll, I'll just repeat this, it's on the screen, would require an intolerable and probably unfeasible level of density. In order to get a big enough site to put a big enough building to get to fifty units per acre, you would have to agglomerate so many parcels that, you know. It just wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense. And it would definitely not be in the physical character of the town. And. I don't think it's really worth talking about, um, because I just, I don't want to voice that on people. Um, but we want to talk about it, we can certainly talk about it. The other. The other thing is at least half the land of the zoning district must comprise contiguous lots. And then for the other half, you can start to do smaller districts. And they don't have to be contiguous. They can be kind of spread around areas of town. The only thing is that they have to be a minimum size of five acres of contiguous lots. So, you know, I know I just said, we're not going to do 50 acres, but just by virtue of kind of explanation, 25 acres of that has to be 25 acres contiguous. And then you could potentially have five discrete, five acre zones elsewhere. And then that would, and that would fit. So just kind of a metaphor that I want you to kind of internalize is that the dimensional requirements in all zoning, but particularly in this, is like, is like your stereo. And the dials can be turned up and they can be turned down. But if you've got constants or at least kind of thresholds that you need to reach, and those are the three that are at the top. The minimum density of 15 units per acre, the zone capacity of 2,461 units and the minimum district size of, you know, 50 acres minimum puts constraints and limits on how much you can turn something up and turn something down. So, you know, the example that I've been using is if you turn the district size dial down to 50, all the other dials have to get cranked up, you know, lot size, lot density, height, to allow for big enough buildings to reach your zone capacity. But as the lot size goes down, density can go down too. Because if you're having smaller lots, that means you can have more lots. That means more lots that have units that can kind of add up to that, that number of 2,461. So, you know, remember, remember your stereo as we kind of go through these. So what I did is I just went into the GIS mapper and started to kind of draw lines. And so if you remember that transit area map, this is kind of what we're talking about. You know, effectively the Elliott Street corridor. I made a decision when I drew this particular one to leave Milton Village out. The thinking being we've done zoning there, we've done design guidelines there. I think we want to use that zoning and not kind of go back to, not necessarily the drawing board, but you know, move to the drawing board on that. If the board or the select board or town meeting or whoever decides, we actually do want to consider Milton Village, we can obviously put it on the table. And I think that goes for everything. I'm showing you examples right now, just to sort of put numbers and pictures on the board. But, you know, these lines can change. These lines can be erased. They can go elsewhere. This is just again, you know, illustrative of, you know, we're going to, we're going to see some numbers in a second. And just to sort of show you the kind of geography that's using those numbers. So this, this drawing here is, you know, approximately 78 acres. And so if you had a 15 unit per acre, that's the minimum density, you'd have about 1170 units of zone capacity. So I, I'm sticking with this 15 units per acre number because my instinct here is that, you know, we're going to be interested in, you know, the lowest possible density. It's the way that you would be able to achieve a product that is as similar to the existing built character of the town as possible. You know, the kind of, the example that I've kind of used is, you know, on a lot of these lots are between 5,000 and 7,000, you know, square feet. Some of them are a little bit bigger. You know, once you get down into the B-zone down here, you've got, you know, relatively large lots, but, but a lot of these are between 5,000 and 7,000. So if you had a 5,000 foot minimum lot size and allowed three units on that lot, you get to 15 units per acre. Because the state defines multifamily as three units or more, three units is the smallest multifamily building that you can do. And so, you know, if you stick with that minimum density, you've got a product that, you know, is not a single family house, obviously, but it's as close to a single family house as you can get and still be considered multifamily. Now, we're going to look at other scenarios in a minute where maybe you might be able to crank that density up a little bit and still, you know, not go nuts. But one thing I just want to sort of show is, you know, this, this exact shape, you know, 78 times 15 equals 1170. When you're doing that calculation of gross density, you can include streets and, you know, other, other things. The state is going to produce a tool that will take out undevelopable sort of wetland areas out of this. And so that doesn't go towards your gross density number. But like, you can still kind of draw the shape and not worry about that. You know, the rights of base still kind of, you know, count. So doing that simple math of 15 times 78 kind of gets you to approximately 1170. 1170 is about half of 2,461. So if, as I said, half of the district has to be within that transit area. So like, this line may need to be adjusted somewhere to get to 50% of that zone capacity. But you're approximately there with this shape. The implications of that is if we chose to go with this district, then we would only be able to do a maximum of 77 acres worth of other districts elsewhere. Because districts that are outside of the transit area can't be more than half of your minimum, your minimum area of your total, your total districts. It's, if your brain is turning to soup right now, it's fine. Mine is as well. This is another, another district that is within the transit area. I turned it on its side just to make it fit and be relatively large. This is Blue Hills Parkway, you know, and then, you know, Mattapan Square, kind of just off the map. This particular district is 24 acres. You know, I drew, I drew a line that tried to kind of hug Blue Hills Parkway as much as possible. Blue Hills Parkway being sort of the main arterial, you know, trying to avoid having as much multifamily housing out on the side streets as you could. Again, you know, this, this district is all within the transit area. So if you wanted it to be bigger, you could move this line to capture this over here. You can move this line to capture this over here if you wanted to have a little bit of a bigger district. This particular example, I wanted to kind of hug Blue Hills Parkway as much as I can. Captured a little bit of Blue Hill Ave over here to get this commercial building. You know, captures the Unquity House over here, which is existing multifamily housing on a large parcel. So this, this particular shape at 15 units per acre, again, 15 times 24 comes out to 360. But there are a few larger parcels. The, you know, the Brook Road overlay parcels are here. You know, it was contemplated at some point for a couple of these parcels to be, you know, multifamily or mixed use. So you could squeeze a little bit of additional density out of some of the larger parcels to maybe crank up, you know, to 16, 17, 20 units per acre on certain parcels to get that, that zone capacity number up. Both this one and the previous one are in the transit area. We may decide that some combination of the two of them are going to be necessary in order to get compliance. But, you know, again, you know, the bigger you make this one, the smaller you make the Elliott Street one and vice versa. You know, so it really just becomes, you know, where do we want to do this stuff? Where's the kind of the most appropriate location? So now we're getting into, if it's a priority for the town to spread these districts around, then we'll start talking about these next set of examples. When I said that there's potentially infinite examples, what I mean is that, you know, if the decision is made that we want to have additional districts outside of the transit area, all you need to do is draw a five acre line around any piece of land in town that would be considered developable. And that could be a district. So, you know, we could, we could do this exercise all week and come up with all different sizes. My instinct here is that, you know, we don't want to necessarily be putting multifamily housing just right in the middle of Indian Cliffs, for example. It just doesn't, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, so what I tried to do is pick areas in town where for either land use or land size or, you know, adjacency to amenities or transportation, where it would make sense to have some measure of multifamily housing. You know, for the purposes of this legislation, which is really to create multifamily housing that has access to transit or amenities or, you know, not just kind of just in the middle of the woods somewhere. So like I said, there's tons of potential examples, but I just wanted to point out places where there's a kind of planning rationale for doing multifamily housing. So this is on Granite Ave around the interchange. The Granite Ave Bridge is just off screen. This is the state DPW Yard and Park and Ride and then the Legion Hall. The reason why I wanted to show this one is because there has been, you know, some level of planning activity around here. Back in 2013, 2014, there was a Granite Ave study group that, you know, at the time, this state land was, you know, potentially available for disposition. At which point we were like, well, what could we do over here? And so there was a working group that kind of studied that. I think the day that that report came out, the state pulled, you know, pulled their, I don't even know if they had an RFP, but they pulled the land out of consideration. One thing to remember here is, is part of the guidelines are that what they consider to be developable land, they tend to exclude state land out of developable land. So like, I couldn't draw, you know, a map on, you know, the the Blue Hills, you know, because it's not up to us to develop that. And it's just not developable land. So don't waste your time doing it. The exception is if there is state land that has been identified by the state as potential for housing development or if it's land that has been studied and kind of mentioned in a DHCD approved housing production plan, then you could, you could potentially include that in your zoning business. So I'm kind of pinning my hopes here on the fact that this is actually in the housing production plan. The housing production plan mentions the history of the state's, it's about disposing of this property. You know, we put that in our plan and we sent it to DHCD and they said, a okay. So, you know, we'll see if they still consider that to be a okay. But this is approximately 12 acres between these two parcels. Like I said, the Legion property and the DPW Park and Ride. At 15 units per acre, it would yield approximately 180 units. But again, the location and the parcel size may warrant greater density for actual building, you know, apartment building or apartment buildings. So you might be able to get more units of zone capacity out of there. It's, it's not the greatest location. I, I used to live next to the highway, I wouldn't recommend it. But, you know, people do develop housing in situations like this. And, you know, it could be something where, you know, folks may be interested in doing development over there. The next one, again, I put it on its side just to be able to fit more of it. You'll recognize this is East Milton Square. North is to your right. I know, you know, we talked about this as we were kind of putting together the RFP for the rezoning that we kind of, we didn't want the consultant to kind of look at MBT communities. I just wanted, I wanted to put in the presentation is to kind of show you what it would look like and kind of what it would yield in terms of zone capacity. And again, the planning rationale here is that, you know, we're not going to be able to get around rezoning significant portions of existing residential area. That's all it is in the transit area, so there's no way to get around it. But if we do want to avoid the pain of, you know, doing that, you know, of putting multifamily, you know, in closer proximity to some of the existing single family stock in town, you know, you do start the need to look at commercial properties, industrial properties, which we don't have a ton of. And so I did just want to put this in here. You know, totally acknowledge the fact that we've kind of talked through this and decided not to go in that direction with our RFP. But it's approximately 18 acres. I included Milton Marketplace, which is technically in a residential zone, but it's obviously very firmly commercial as a land use. At 15 units an acre, that's 270 units of zone capacity. Again, the location, the parcel sizes may warrant, you know, greater density, you know, depending on which parcel it is. So you may be able to get more units out of that. So the final two, and again, you know, this goes back to, you know, what is a planning rationale for some of this stuff? Is the Copeland property on the corner of Randolph Ave and Hillside Street. This is a large parcel. I think it's, I'll say it's about 11 acres in single ownership. It is currently home to commercial uses. It's the former Pepsi bottling plant, Newcombe Farms is over there as well. You know, this is, this is not something where it would be, it'd be displacing any kind of residential use. We have planning documents dating back to the 50s that contemplate, you know, a shopping center down here. That never came to pass, zoning never happened. And that kind of idea kind of went by the wayside. But, you know, over the years, you know, obviously this is a non-conforming, pre-existing commercial use. You know, folks have looked at this land and said, you know, what else can you do here? You know, it's, it's not a blank canvas, but you know, it is something. It's got existing users, there's a thriving kind of commercial community down there. But again, the planning rationale being large parcel, contiguous parcel. You know, it's on the edge of town, proximity to 128, you know, via Randolph Ave. You know, could probably support some multifamily housing. So about 11 acres at that minimum density, 15 units per acre, you get 165 units of zone capacity. But again, you know, that size of the parcel may warrant, you know, greater density than that. And you can, you can crank up that zone capacity number. The reason I keep on saying that is, you know, the more zone capacity you can get in one district, the less that you need in another district. And you may be able to minimize the size of other districts or the number of other districts. If you can have a decent amount of zone capacity where it can be supported. So the second option is the same area, but it kind of folds in to kind of create a contiguous area. This is the large residential parcel to the south of Newcombe Farms and then goes across Randolph Ave to get to the A Thomas landscaping parcel and then the the Animal Rescue League landlocked parcel behind that. Again, similar planning rationale here. This is an existing non-residential use on a large parcel. If ever there was a redevelopment, you know, over here, you know, multifamily could potentially be in the mix. But again, you know, we're drawing lines on a map, you know, based on the size of parcels and the current land use. Anything, any rezoning that would happen, you know, would happen with the consultation of the owners. And quite frankly, the thing about zoning, you know, that you have to understand is that, you know, if your parcel gets rezoned for greater density, you're the boss. You know, you could never redevelop ever in your life. Or, you know, you've got that option. So again, you know, I wanted to kind of put options out there that have a sound planning basis based on physical planning and physical land use. Which is kind of why I'm showing this. This is just a rare part of town where you have kind of relatively close proximity, large commercial parcels. You really don't have that elsewhere. So, so again, the second option down in this part of town, about 30 acres at 15 units an acre, you'd get to 450 of zone capacity. But again, you know, the size of these parcels, you know, may warrant, you know, additional, additional density there. So that's the end of the presentation. Again, you know, just to go back to the beginning, this is literally a brainstorming exercise. So, you know, this just kind of shows you kind of what's out there, what the potential is and kind of hopefully gives everyone a framework for understanding. Okay, as we start to draw these lines, what are the trade offs? What are the constraints? What are, you know, what are the opportunities? So I'm going to stop my share and we can, we can chat.
Thank you, Tim. And we have two hands up. Cheryl, I think you were first and then Sean.
Thank you. Tim, I was wondering if you looked at Fuller Village in terms of what density it already has? And then also, if you look at like where Winter Valley is, so where you already have units. So can those, can those become a district so that you already have built a lot of the capacity that's in the zoning? So that what you're looking at for new potential units is actually less? And for the same reason, I'm wondering why not include 88 Wharf and Milton Hill House? Because there's already density there. And even the potentially including like Web Mill, where that's likely to go mixed use at some point. And even the potentially including like Web Mill, where that's likely to go mixed use at some point. We would already have density that's built.
So what you would have to do is, the underlying zoning would, you, you, so th- this is, what they're not doing is counting units that exist. They're, 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 they're counting units that could potentially exist under by right zoning. So.
Tim, can I just stop you there for a sec? But if I, if you're thinking about the likelihood of property getting redeveloped, if you already have some that's been developed in that zone, then you're, the amount that you have left to meet is less, right?
Right. But, and, and, and so this is, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll need a little bit of clarity on this. You know, because it's a question that comes up where, I mean, the, the state is interested in producing new units, right? And so what you would need to do is, he- here, here's what I'll say is, ba- based on what I've heard from DHCD is, you know, say there's, you know, there's 100 units at 88 Wharf right now. If we change the zoning from PUD to an as-of-right zoning scheme that permitted 100 units on that parcel, I don't know if that would, if that would pass muster with DHCD. Because what you would be doing is effectively just changing the zoning to count units that were produced by a special permit in a discretionary process, w- without actually having the realistic potential for new units being, being built.
Yeah, but they're also not telling you to exclude existing development, right?
I, I guess what I'm saying is if you were to zone under existing development, my instinct here is that they would want to see that zoning be for a greater density than already existed. Because otherwise you're reducing the amount of new housing that your district could produce because it's not reasonable to assume that the owners of 88 Wharf are going to demolish their existing building and just build new numbers of units at the same density. It just doesn't make sense. They wouldn't do it. So you can, you can, you know, wrap in existing multi-family districts. But a- a- again, I, I, my, my instinct here, based on, on what DHCD has presented in, in, in various conversations, is that they want to see zoning that could potentially produce new units and not just kind of create paper credit for units that were produced under a special permit.
I understand that. And I understand that the number of units we're talking about for Milton, I think it's hard for people to visualize where you could actually do that. And so if we're trying to evaluate a district that's along the trolley, I don't think we'd want to leave out the properties that are already there that are multifamily. So just like you included Unquity House, I think you would, I would suggest you'd want to include just to see what it does to, what you've already done. I appreciate everything that you did. I think it's really helpful to visualize. And, um, I just think this would be another level of trying to plug that in, see what it does. And then like, all right, so let, let's just say there's a certain amount of density that's going to go ahead at 648, 652 Canton Ave. But let's hope it's not that, that which is approved. But if you take that plus Winter Valley and you take, am I right? They don't count the memory care, right? But if we included those 10 acres, but that's, nothing is approved there yet, right? Nothing's even been applied for there yet. So is there a district around there which has a lot of units already? If the memory care falls through, maybe you could build something there.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, that, that's, that's certainly a possibility. And, and so I, I, I think, I think that, you know, the difference between, you know, and, and, and so what I'll say, just to sort of get back to kind of the, the Milton Village area. You know, the reason why I didn't draw that line and, and we could, you know, absolutely talk about this because I think you make a lot of valid points. The thing is, there's so much in that Milton Village zoning, including design standards, including incentives for preservation and affordable housing, that really lends itself to a special permit process. That if you were to create by right zoning at a similar density, if you're a developer or a property owner, you would go with the by right option because it doesn't have as many strings and it wouldn't have as many discretionary kind of processes involved. You'd effectively be able to go get your building permit after a site plan approval process, which the planning board could reject. So you would lose all.
Sorry, one thing on that though. I thought that because we have design guidelines already there, that design guidelines could be imposed on a district there because you're not doing something different for that MBTA community that you've already got in place.
So I, I, I would need, I would need to ask specifically about the design guidelines issue. But you, you kind of have to understand and, and kind of think through, like, what is, so if it's a by right process, you know, it's just like a by right process for building a single family house on a zoning compliant lot. Never goes to the planning board, never has anyone kind of say, you should have black shutters instead of blue shutters. You go to the building department, they give you your, 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 your building permit. The same thing would apply for multi-family. You would be able to have a site plan review process, um, because we, we do that for multi-family projects and you're allowed to do that. But the site plan review is really kind of circumscribed to circulation, lighting, landscaping. All of those issues about, there's, there's really no place for the planning board, like the, the, the design guideline, you could, you know, if you're a developer, you could use them, but there's really no way for the planning board to kind of enforce those. Because you can't reject the site plan application, um, because it's for a by right project. So, you know, if you, you could certainly do something in Milton Village, but you, you run the risk of losing the things, the sort of the protections and the incentives and, and all of the other sort of good stuff that we put into that zoning.
So question, you can't put any design standards in or design guidelines into MBTA zoning? Because who wants to not have any control over what's going to, what they're going to look like? I mean, I can't imagine Boston has tons of control over review of what something's going to look like, even something that needs zoning in neighborhood design overlays. I, I'm surprised at that. This isn't something where it's come up that, I mean, you can see where the cheapest thing possible would be desired in, to be built. And that would not be desirable in most places. Anyway.
Yeah, no. So I, I can definitely, I can definitely look into the design guidelines question. You know, because I, I, I think it's a valid one. It, it's just again, kind of, you know, how does that, you know, we don't, we don't have any design control over single family houses. You know, and, and if you kind of take that to, you know, if, if we allowed other things under zoning that kind of fell below the site plan review standard, you know, we wouldn't have any kind of design control over those either. So that's kind of the logic that I'm kind of running through. But I, I can definitely look into and see if, you know, that's something that other folks have asked about. Because I, I think it is, it's an important thing because, you know, they've said you can do site plan review. But, you know, what are the things that are kind of in bounds in site plan review versus, versus not? So I'll definitely, I'll definitely.
I can see where a, a three-family may not be as necessary. But I still think it would be nice if it could be. But you start getting into the larger buildings and I, I think a level of design review and beyond just, um, you know, circulation and tree placement. And we can see this with the 40Bs that, you know, there's, doesn't mean it's less, the project's not going to get approved, but I mean, if you can put some design guidelines in, I think you can start to, to get a, at least a little more comfort that something would be not awful in terms of its quality and character. But so anyway, that's, those are just some of my initial thoughts, Tim, and thank you.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll, I'll check into the design guidelines. And, and I do want to have a little bit of a better understanding of kind of what they're thinking in terms of folding in kind of places that have existing stock. Because this is, this is actually a highly relevant issue in Cambridge and Somerville. You know, where, you know, there's a lot of multi-family. Some of it happened to be produced by a special permit. Some of it's by right. And so how does that kind of get navigated and counted? So there's definitely folks that are thinking about this. Um, so I'll have some better answers about that as well.
Thank you, Sean. You had your hand up next.
Tim, I, I first wanted to compliment you on putting this together because I think this is, this is really, this, this is great for us to be able to begin to wrap our brain around how we could actually, um, become compliant. So for that, I think it's excellent. When I go through these districts that you've created and presented, there's one, two, this, there's one, two, three, four, there's five districts. So the Elliott Street District, the Blue Hills Parkway District, the Granite Ave District, the East Milton District, and then the Hillside Randolph. I, I'm referring to option two up in that area. If you, if we were ever, if this was an example of what we had to accomplish, and granted, some of these districts would move around and maybe take place someplace other than where you have indicated. That still doesn't get us, although it gets us close. It doesn't get us to the number, right? So 1,001 70, uh, in Elliott, 360 in Blue Hills Parkway, 180 at Granite Ave, 270 East Milton, and then 450 in the Hillside Randolph. Option two gets us to 2,430. So we, we fall slightly short. But I think what you've done is given us, and really the residents of the town at some point should see the magnitude of what it takes to be compliant with the MBTA Communities Act. It's, it's huge. And, and, and I recognize it's just, you know, really it's a matter of creating zoning, but the likelihood of it being achieved in our town with as much developed land as we have already, um, is, you know, it's, it's probably not likely. So I, I go back to something I had said several meetings ago. And I really feel the responsibility that we have as a town, and certainly within our group as a planning board, is a cost benefit analysis. So, you know, obviously one of the benefits is that, um, we would contribute to increasing housing stock. Our area needs housing stock. I think we all know it. We all understand that. So that's the benefit. What are the costs? And, and I do think the costs are beyond my ability, um, you know, to be able to even roughly ascertain. But when I think of increasing, uh, the residential units in the town by 25%, you know, I start to think about the impact on the town services that we're responsible to provide. And when I think of a 25% increase in 2,466, I think about what is the impact on the fire department? What is the impact on the police department? What is the impact on the DPW? What is our impact on our roads, our utilities? And, and, you know, if you add this kind of residential density to any part of the town, you know, do we even have the roadways to be able to, uh, imagine 25% more vehicles on the road in Milton? And, and I know in the, in, in the, you know, the perfect world, you know, we don't add 25% more vehicles to the road. But we have to expect that that could be the outcome. So 25% more vehicles, 25% more residential units, 25% greater population. And, and none of that is, none of that is actually, uh, 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 you know, a, a math equation that we can, that we can say, oh, it won't be any more than that. So police, fire, DPW, schools. W- we don't even have the capacity right now to, um, provide the school space that we need for the current students that we have. The offsetting revenue is property tax. So if we increase and add housing units, we're, we're adding, uh, a prof- a, a property tax revenue stream. But, you know, while we look at the area physically that it would take to accomplish this, I think we have a responsibility to the residents to look at what is the cost? You know, if you were to approach each of our chiefs, our fire chief and our police chief, and said, imagine you had 25% more residential units in the town. Are you satisfied that you can provide the services that you provide with what you currently have? I, I, I don't know what either chief would say, but I suspect they would have serious concerns. Same for the DPW. We put 25% more vehicles into the town. What's the impact on our roadways, on our infrastructure? So wh- while we examine these areas, these land areas where we could potentially create zoning, I think in tandem, we have to evaluate what is the cost impact to the town? Because, uh, it's not, it doesn't take anyone other than this group here to recognize that the funding, the grants, at, you've gone through this with me and I think you've shared it with the, uh, with the entire board, we're receiving an average of $100,000 a year. I believe that, that, that is nowhere close to the cost that the town will, will, uh, be impacted by if we ever, create the kind of, the, the, the number of residential units that, that we would zone for. So I, I, I won't go on, but I, I feel like in tandem with what you're, what we're doing, and, and I'm not sure who to turn to. But in tandem with this, I think there's an evaluation of, um, of the costs that the town should anticipate. Should we get to the point where we're prepared to commit to this?
Yeah. So I, I, I think there's, there's a lot of good points there. And, and I think those are going to be questions that we need, we'll, we'll need to kind of have a little bit more expertise at our disposal to answer. But I, I think a couple of things just off, off the top. You know, and, and it speaks to sort of the trade-off of where you put these districts. Because, you know, the point of, you know, it being MBTA communities is you, 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 you put the housing near transit. And you reduce the need for, for households to own vehicles. You know, there may even be, I, I'd have to double check on this, um, you know. But, you know, if you can get away with, you know, one parking space per unit, which we've done in, in Milton Village, you know, because you're within that transit district and, and people can, you know, have a one, a one-car household. They've got access to transit and amenities, and you really limit the impact of, of, of additional vehicles. You know, the, the, the provision of parking, the building of parking is the number one determinant of, of household vehicle ownership. You know, people will not bring their cars to a place where they can't park. It's just, it's, it's, it's borne out. But, but that has trade-offs. That means, you know, all of the density goes into a relatively, you know, discreet, you know, big but small part of town. Um, and you kind of don't spread it out. You know, if you do spread it out, you know, if you're, if you're down on, on Route 28, you know, the bus goes by, it's great, but you, you, you wouldn't want to sort of put people, you know, out there without access to a vehicle. And so then, you know, then you're talking about more vehicles. You know, the, the issue of, of, of infrastructure, um, you know, it's, I was talking to, uh, to the town engineer the other day and they're putting down new pipes in some street. And I'm like, oh, you put in bigger pipes so we can build more houses? And she's like, no, but, you know, she's, and she's got a kind of a cross-section of, of an old pipe. And, and Sean, you're probably familiar with this, but like, you know, the, the, the older the pipe, the more it gets kind of placked in. So even just replacing pipes with, with the same size, I mean, like, you know, every, every time we put new pipes in, we increase capacity because the old pipes are so, are, are tight. You know, that's, that's kind of one. So I, I, and, and we'll obviously have to analyze this kind of on a townwide basis. But, you know, my instinct is that sort of that type of infrastructure, we're in a position to support, um, you know, more, more housing if we needed to. But I think, um, you know, I, I don't want to make too many claims or, or too many counter arguments because I think you, you, you are raising really important questions and I don't want to be flip about any of it. I think we do need to, you know, take the time and sharpen our pencils. But, um, the, the one thing that I'll say is, you know, as you go into the costs and benefits, there, there are unknown costs. And I, I've mentioned this before, but, um, you know, I, I don't know what will happen to non-compliant communities. But the, 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 the secretary for Economic Development and Housing has said, you know, in, in multiple meetings that we've had with them, that, you know, there, there are going to be additional penalties. They're very coy about that. I'm, I'm frustrated with their coyness, quite frankly. Because I think it would be who the state to just be straight up with towns about, you know, what do you think you're going to do to non-compliant communities beyond what's actually in the legislation? But they really are leaning on the fact that like, it says that you shall have this. You know, the one thing that I've seen speculation on is, you know, what, what we kind of refer to as a builder's remedy. 40B is a type of builder's remedy. There are other states and, and, and places around the country that do things differently. But it would effectively be if you've got a property owner that proposes something, you know, within a half a mile of your transit station in, in a non-compliant town, you know, can they make a credible claim in court to say, this town should have a zoning district that allows me to build 15 units per acre and they don't? So a judge should let me do that. Again, I, I don't know if that's something that's in the cards. But I've seen, you know, very bright and knowledgeable. but I I've seen, you know, very bright and knowledgeable kind of housing professionals speculate that that's something, you know, because I don't think the state is going to come in, you know, and put down a heavy hammer on a town. I don't know what the mechanism for that would be. But, you know, just like with forty B and just like with other kind of builders remedies across the country, you know, states have kind of let the private sector kind of figure that out. So then, in that case, you'd be in a position where you're getting the impact without actually having had the input into putting regulations in place yourself. So it's an unknown cost that I think, you know, I I wish it were more known, I really do, um, you know, because it's 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 a disservice, I think, to the planners and to communities to kind of have that kind of specter. Because, you know, they have said it, and it's like, all right, well, don't be, don't be spooky. Tell me what you're going to do. But I think, you know, as we start to talk about, you know, if if we get some grant funding, what are the types of things that a professional, um, you know, can help us with? What are, you know, data sources that we can leverage as a staff to kind of answer some of these questions? To give everyone as much information. So I think you're absolutely right. You know, you can't, you you've got to, you've got to know what you're getting into, um, and I I think it's important, so.
Thank you, Tim.
Well, I I that I I appreciate all that. I I feel, at least for our responsibility as a planning board, that um we examine this and examine it well. And we have state representatives that we can turn to. And uh both Walter and Bill, I'm sure, have an interest in in helping us understand this process. And I, you know, uh, at least my opinion is, I um an unknown threat potentially by the state wouldn't prompt me anyway to favor uh a a uh an an adoption of this. I I just, um, you know, I don't think, we we need better definition. It's not fair of the state to 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 make any assertion like that. But um I don't know where to take it, Tim, because this is beyond my ability. I I don't get close to the town budget, but I I sincerely feel that if we're adopting, you know, any zoning that would allow the town to grow by twenty five percent residential units, we have some serious cost implications um that we have to take a look at, serious. And uh there are there are people much more capable than I, you know, to be able to evaluate, you know, how it does impact um these largest departments of our town, police, fire, school, DPW.
Thank you. And Maggie, you had your hand up, so to speak. Are you muted, I think?
Sorry, I just wanted to thank Tim for putting this together. I know it's a concept, um, but I think our residents really need to understand what the potential impacts could be. And I'm so I'm wondering first if um you could put this on our web website because many of us are visual learners and um it's helpful to see it. But I was um going to ask along the same lines as Sean. I do think that this is a reckless mandate by the state, and I think this could really, um, you know, bankrupt our towns. And so I'm kind of wondering if we've reached out to um Walter and um Bill. And I think that maybe we could reach out to them and invite them in to come um talk to us and give us a little bit more clarity and let us know how they see that this is going. I feel like, um, you know, they are the ones with the boots on the ground. And I think they, um, we deserve um them to come and talk to us about this. So I'm not sure who would reach out to them, but I'm kind of wondering if if it's on you.
I can certainly, I can certainly do that. Um, if the board is interested in 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 doing that, I can reach out to to those those staff members. There there may be, there there may be some interest on the select board as well to um to kind of hear from those folks. So I think, um, you know, we can, we can kind of reach out and and maybe see if we can get them on a future agenda. Um, obviously, they're they're very busy, but they're also, um, you know, top notch guys. And and I think would would relish the opportunity to help out. You know, a- as it relates to to posting this presentation of the website, happy to do it. The 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 hesitation that I have is that the 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 conceptual nature of these things, I really like, I can't underscore enough like how conceptual this stuff is. I mean, it, the these are examples. I I I don't want to be putting something up on the website that someone's going to look at and say, oh, my God, the town is upzoning my house because we're not even there, we're not even close to being there yet. Um, and so, you know, happy to do it for informational purposes. Um, but I I just want to, I I may want to kind of add some 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 additional information at the top and bottom just to kind of reassure people that, you know, we are, you know, a long way away from any kind of decision. Um, and it's going to be, you know, ample opportunity for people to kind of weigh in on this stuff. Um, I don't want people, you know, getting, you know, undue anxiety that, you know, we're kind of doing something, you know, without consultation or or information. So um I'll get to work on that. Because I I do agree, you know, you know, people see materials in a public meeting, they should be able to access them. Um, I just want to make sure people, you know, aren't confused about the context here.
No, and I think you did a good job, and, you know, you say it's for discussion and it's an example. But really, it it's causing, and it is causing reality, uh, confusion and anxiety for people as it is. So I don't think you'd be causing more. You know, the more information we have, the less anxious um we become, so, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get to work on that.
Thank you. Great, great points. Uh Cheryl?
Yes, I was thinking, Tim, with those consultants that you may be able to bring up or you um gave some examples of what fifteen units an acre might look like. But it would might be useful to have a consultant take a look at a few of these sites, which are for the larger parcels, let's say Granite Ave, or or let's say the Hillside um Randolph Ave. Because they're kind of blank, a little bit more blank than, let's say, Elliott Street. And, you know, have them do a few um tests. You know, how would you get fifteen units an acre on here? Because it might not be as scary as some people might think it it would be. Like, you know, I live near Winter Valley. Winter Valley's not terrible. I live near Quistock Brook. And I I live near, um, what's the other one? The inter- there's two of them at the intersection of Blue Hills Parkway and Catnap. You know, and I walked through all of those, and they're, I don't know, it'd be interesting to know what density they are. I mean, they have big buffers, right? But if you didn't have that same level of buffer, or what about, um, you know, I did this kind of analysis. I I actually built, sketch up three D models of Winter Valley, of Fuller Village, of Unquity House, et cetera, when looking at the forty Bs and trying to compare those forty Bs to what the housing stock that we have is. And I think it's useful and it's helpful for people to understand if you said, okay, here's, you know, um, thirty six Central. You know, thirty six Central is how many units an acre? And, you know, because then people can put a picture to something that they're familiar with. Showing them something in, you know, in another locale is hard for people to kind of see how that works. So I think if we could get the consultant to start doing, and again, these are still represent representative, but they can sort of take, you know, that what does fifteen acre, fifteen units an acre look like on this kind of a site?
That's what I was going to exactly say the same thing, Cheryl. And, you know, doing a build out analysis almost and showing, you know, what does this, what what would this look like in our town, you know, as amassing, as and look at the scale amassing? You know, with that density, because, you know, again, Tim, until we find out more about design guidelines, you know, they could take those fifteen units and they could build, you know, if they don't have a height restriction, are they building, you know, a six, seven story building on a, you know?
Well, so so a- and a couple of things, and 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 I think, first of all, I think this is like an a number one thing that you would want. You know, the the way that I conceive of this and and the reason why I I think, you know, that that the Elliott Street kind of corridor provides possibilities is, you know, th- there is the potential for, what we don't want to see is teardowns. You know, because it's probably, it may be inevitable, but you want to, you want to minimize that because I I I think people are very, you know, rightfully jealously guarded of the physical character of town. Everyone likes the way it looks. Everyone likes how how everyone else's house looks. It's it's great. And so, you know, you want to figure out a way to prevent that. And 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 I think there's an opportunity to do retrofits and remodels on on a significant number of those houses to sort of reach a minimum level of density that that would be acceptable without, you know, dramatically changing the character. And even if we do have teardowns, I think, you know, there's 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 new kind of stuff out there that I think looks nice and and and, you know, wouldn't be, you know, too dramatic. I think on some of these larger parcels, and I think this speaks a little bit to to some of Sean's concerns, you know, when you, when when you spread out the sort of the density among dozens of parcels, the likelihood that any one parcel at any given time is going to be redeveloped is relatively low. Think about your own homes. How often do you remodel your home? You know, how often do your neighbors remodel your home? It's not everyone on the street isn't doing it at the same time. You know, the same thing for a significant number of smaller parcels, so that that impact gets kind of soaked up in a more gradual fashion, in a way that on larger parcels where you're zoning for greater density, greater height, you know, as soon as that landowner can either sell to a developer and the developer can financing, that project is moving. And if you're talking ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, I don't think we would get up to too many more than that. But on a larger apartment building, you know, after an eighteen to twenty four month construction period, that is an acute impact immediately. All of those people are now in town. They are getting to their apartment building, however they're driving or walking or biking or whatever. However, many kids are immediately entering the schools. And so that becomes another thing to think about in terms of trade offs of how how fast will this happen? You know, that twenty four hundred sixty one number is a big number. You know, if you if you kind of assume that we will eventually get there, you can get there real quick or you can get there gradually. I personally don't think that we would get there. I just don't think that every parcel will be redeveloped. But, uh, you know, that's a way to think about it, is like, you know, these bigger parcels are immediate and acute in a way that a bunch of smaller parcels are not. But then, you know, Meredith, to your to your kind of final concern, you know, there's a difference between design guidelines and dimensional standards. Dimensional standards are bread and butter zoning stuff. You can set that heights, um, you know, density, there's a minimum density, but you can set a density cap. You know, these are all things that are totally in bounds. You know, you you, if if you don't want a seven story building, you don't have a seven story building. You read that sentence, so, um, you know, how that relates to other more either aesthetic or kind of subjective kind of materials or design kind of concerns, we'll need to figure out. But dimensional standards are one hundred percent zoning in bounds. They expect you to sort of put that stuff in.
So one last thing, sorry, Meredith.
Actually, I can look, Sean has his hand up, so I have a question too. But Sean, you go ahead first, because you were.
Two, um, yeah, two, two points. One is, how fast will it happen is a question? It'll happen as fast as developer greed drives it. Because you zone areas for that kind of density. Every developer that wants to take a parcel of land and maximize the number of units on it will approach a a current landowner, drop another on that landowner to buy it and uh and and get their return uh very, very well. So just imagine, and and I imagine the Elliott Street Corridor, which from the way I understand it, Tim, the Elliott Street Corridor would absolutely have to be part of the zoning. We have to be within a half mile, right? I can't imagine that we could do this without without making a commitment to the Elliott Street Corridor being part of it. So just imagine you live in that Elliott Street Corridor and and our town adopts this. If a developer comes along and picks up the picks up a parcel of land and um he he can develop that land at at a a ratio of fifteen units per acre, and and maybe it's a half acre that he picks up, and he's able to put seven units on it. And and you have a residence that's right beside it that has no say, and he ends up with seven units on a parcel of land that previously had a single family residence? I I think I'm describing a likely scenario. You you know, I think we'll have people that would be enormously upset. And I I don't think, if I'm if I'm wrong in my in my uh imagined scenario, developers will be racing to Milton to offer significant money to single family homeowners to acquire their land.
Yeah, I I mean, I I don't, I don't think you're being unreasonable. I I I think I think you're right that, you know, that that's a scenario that, what what I will say is is just a couple of things, you know. It it's it's up to every individual property owner to develop or redevelop, to sell or to not sell. And so these are individual decisions that individuals make, um, you know.
And Tim, and Tim, while that's, while that's, I absolutely agree with that. I apologize for interrupting you. But it's up to us as a town, you know, to look after the rights of the residents that bought a home, again, in a single family residence community, thinking, you know, that they could live in that type of a community. So if we make a zoning change, um, you know, that allows that to happen, have we done right by the people that bought with an expectation that this wasn't going to happen?
I, you know, th- th- this is, you know, this is the kind of the box that um that a lot of towns have been put in. You know, and and, you know, there there's a, there's an extent to which some of these towns have have put themselves in that box where, you know, we have, we have a housing problem in the region. There's not enough, there's an intense demand to live in this region, and not enough places for people to live. And so, you know, to the point that the state felt the need to step in. So, you know, this is not something that, you know, this is not exclusive to Milton. Everyone, um, you know, them is dealing with it, Norwood, Weston, Wellesley, Westwood. You know, all, everyone is is sort of dealing with this issue. So, you know, it it's 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 going to have to be a a kind of fundamental question that that the town has to answer. You know, the state has come in with a law. You know, what are the trade offs? And we're talking about physical trade offs. I'm a planner. I'm I'm interested in the physical conditions. But there are, there are other trade offs. And that is, you know, what what do you, what do you feel your responsibility is to the residents versus you know, your your responsibility to to comply with state law, to your responsibility to, um, you know, accommodate, you know, a reasonable amount of growth, um, you know, in the town for 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 the positive reasons. Focus a lot on the negative, but, um, you know, we do have a housing affordability problem in the town. And and that's exacerbated by the fact that, you know, we don't allow multifamily housing to be built. And so, you know, these are all factors that I I don't, you know, I I I have a a little bit of a tough job, um, you know, sometimes. But I don't envy you folks, um, because it is, you know, a really tough set of considerations. And I think there are really, um, really tremendously powerful arguments on both sides. Um, and I I I think everyone's been raising kind of the right questions. So I think you're all on the right track in terms of how to think about this. But it is difficult. Um, and so, you know, I'm here to to kind of help you all and 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 provide as much information as I can, you know, and in terms of helping you make, you know, what you guys think are the right decisions. So, um, you know, Sean, you you're throwing a lot of heavy stuff out there. I don't have a ton of great answers, but.
No, no, you know, and I, and honestly, you have a very, very difficult job. You know, I'm a volunteer. You're a town planner. You represent the residents of the town, just like we do. So um the the direction that we move as a town has an awful lot to do with the role that you fulfill and and uh and um and how how the town gets moved under your leadership. So it's not just us that has a tough assignment. You do too. And I, believe me, I don't want to be in your seat. That's why I go and do what I do every day.
Oh, right.
Thank you, Sean. Um, and Cheryl, and then I do want to um allow any um anyone from any residents to uh raise their hand if they have questions also um on the presentation. So Cheryl.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Tim, I was thinking it would be helpful to understand what the current density is of the Elliott Street Corridor. So if you and if you, um, because you were saying that a lot of the lots being five to seven thousand square feet. So I'm just curious if if you could provide that. And then just to what I think a couple other folks have said. I mean, the Elliott Street Corridor could be made into a basically a three family corridor, right? I mean, so it doesn't have to be that you allow all of the range of housing types in in every single district, right? Because what you'd want to think about is, you already have small lot sizes. So do you have a small lot size solution? I'm back to the prototypes again. So do you have a prototype that works for a small lot? Do you have a prototype that works for a little bit bigger lot? And that are scaled appropriately for the neighborhood? So if you have a lot that's three thousand, let's say it's an acre in a five thousand, well, it's not zone five thousand, but the preexisting nonconforming lot size of five thousand. but the preexisting non-conforming lot size of 5,000. Then if you have a single family on a larger lot and you say, well, that lot's going to get, you know, made into something much bigger. Well, it's not if you're comparing it against the zoning, right? So there's these kind of, I don't know if I want to call them nuances, but there's a sort of more granular evaluation, I think is the next step. So I mentioned the next step on the bigger parcels that would likely see a different kind of development. But maybe the next step for the Elliot Street piece, it's a look at its current density. Look at sort of tailoring it to that kind of a lot size that already exists there. And also you could cap it at three story there. You could add the setbacks to protect. I mean, a lot of parcels, there are parts of Milton that the setbacks are pretty small, pretty, you know, they're not. And I think some of the Elliot Street corridor falls into that same category. So anyway, I, I just wanted to add that little bit more of evaluation suggestion to what I already suggested earlier.
Yeah, I, I, I think that makes, that makes a lot of sense.
Great. And is there anyone from the public? I don't see any hands up. If there is anybody who would like to speak on this agenda item, please feel free to raise your hand. I am not seeing one. So.
Can I make one last comment on just what Sean said about developer greed? I, I will just say that it's a matter of economics as well. And I think you're going to find that, um, you know, there will be a limit to what speculation can be depending upon what, you know, the, um, what would make economic sense for land purchase and construction costs. So there's that piece too.
Thank you. Um, and I do have a question because, um, you know, I'm thinking of some of the towns that have just now met their 10% of affordable housing. I think one of the elephants in the room is, you know, for all of these units, w- we will then be tasked with creating additional affordable units. So we will still be exposing ourselves to further 40B projects. If we're, if we're slipping behind and we're not, we're not able to get there.
Yeah. And, 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 and that's, and that's something, you know, it, it is, you know, they've, they've tried to, try to mix a metaphor about elephants in the room. They've, they've tried to address that a little bit because that was a question in, in the draft guidelines about, well, can you do inclusionary zoning? And, and they said, yeah, but you can only do 10%. Because they don't, they don't want people to put onerous inclusionary requirements that kind of make projects not economically feasible. And so, you know, the, the recognition being like 10% will keep you at whatever status quo you are regarding 40B. And you may have to produce additional affordable somewhere else or, or, or whatever. You know, another, another trade off that we, that, you know, what, what we'll need to talk about, you know, if you want to do the minimum density, you know, especially in an area, you know, Elliot Street and sort of the western part of town, you want to do three family houses. You can't, you know, 10% of three is less than one unit. So, you know, you really, if you want to have an inclusionary requirement, you're talking about a 10 unit building or more. You know, where you can actually get a whole unit of inclusionary, you know, housing. And so, you know, on the one hand, the minimum density on a given lot will kind of stay, you know, roughly within the physical character of kind of, you know, the, the, the town as exists today. But then your, your denominator number is, is going up without any kind of offsetting affordability versus the, 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 the countervailing kind of example of, all right, we zone for bigger things, but then we can get some affordable units out of it and, and, and not, you know, lose, lose progress. I think.
So, um, one thing on that, couldn't you make a, a, um, financial contribution as a requirement of a three family such that you end up with three or four of those, with a financial contribution that could go to the Affordable Housing Trust who would be charged with producing those units?
I thi- I, I, I think, I mean, you could, I'll, I'll have to look into that. It, it potentially is an option. I, I guess what I'll say with the financial contribution is like, you know, we're, we're not city of Boston or city of Cambridge where we have like a lot of projects that we can kind of throw money at. You know, if you do a contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust, the trust has to spend that money then on a project, which we're kind of back where we, where we started with, you know.
But it could be like Maggie's suggestion before is that they actually buy a house, right?
Yeah.
Comes in affordable house. So they buy a two family instead of that two family going into condos at market rate.
Yeah.
Thought of wanting to say that you don't have to totally discount the three family.
Right.
Because, you know, that would, that would be problematic.
Well, and, and I think, and, and we talked about this, uh, you know, previous meetings and, and I, I, I reached out to, uh, reached out to a year ago. I think this is why it's important to get it, get a handle on the land count. Because, you know, if we can, if we can make good progress on the land count for 40B, I think that's a sturdier, um, form of safe harbor than the units. You know, we're not going to be taking conservation land out of conservation. So like, I think once we can demonstrate that we're at one and a half percent, I think we're pretty firmly in safe harbor for the foreseeable future. In a way that, you know, with the units, you're constantly having to kind of keep up. And so, you know, I think the ideal under 40B, you know, from the state's perspective is you get to 10% and then you can do planning on, on your own terms rather than worrying about 40B. You know, the state's hope is that your own terms includes some measure of multifamily housing and you can do it in an appropriate way. But I think, you know, again, having the specter of 40B is just always going to distract us from real planning. And so I think finding a sturdy and durable form of safe harbor is going to be really important.
Thank you. And we do have a resident, um, that, uh, Matt Morong, if we could let, invite him to come.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome, Matt.
My name is Matt Morong. Um, I live at 136 Elliot Street, um, kind of right at the corner of Central Ave and Elliot. So this directly affects me. Um, and I want to first say thank you, uh, to Tim in particular for, you know, all the work that he's put into helping us visualize what this really means. And it is, it's a daunting issue, um, that we all have to deal with here. I, I want, I guess what I want to say is, you know, I'm hoping that everybody can keep an open mind about this. That residents of Milton certainly benefit from being part of a greater region, um, living in, you know, so close to Boston. We benefit from it economically and we're benefiting from the transportation system that exists here. And so I think, you know, as, as, as part of that system, I do think that, you know, there, there's, there are ways that we can give back to it. Um, I think that we have some resources available, um, particularly in terms of land and proximity. Um, and I think that, you know, through the task that this board is charged with, right? Through smart planning, um, I think that interesting and, you know, possibly really good solutions could come of this. You know, and I think that I, I, it's a scary time, but you know, in, in speaking as somebody who has a lot riding on this. But, you know, I also think that there are a lot of potential, um, social benefits, economic benefits and environmental benefits that could come out of this. So really that's, that's, I just want to say my piece on that front, you know, that I think that, um, I'm, I'm very interested for obvious reasons in, in, uh, what happens with this. But I am going to remain optimistic that, um, that something good could come of it in the long term.
Thank you so much, Matt. Thank you for your comments. And so, Tim, I, I know we've thrown a lot at you and it's almost 10:20. And we don't have to go into the weeds, but I think as many questions as we can, you know, again, throw at you that you can find out informations because if we have these questions, you know, the residents are going to have questions. And the one, um, last piece is by the right, again, this goes back to what does, what does that mean? And getting our, our arms around, you know, sort of our, our heads around, uh, that idea. So we have a, um, you know, I'm just going to say there's a, there's some great Victorians on Elliot Street, some really fantastic, um, properties. Say somebody wants to come in, um, tear one of those down. We have a two-year demolition delay. Does that override, does that developer, can they override a demolition delay? Or is that something that, that would still hold up for our town if, if it was a, if it was a, a historic property?
I just typed that question down and I will get an answer for you.
You don't have to answer it right now, but that's.
Yeah, no, but it, it is a good question because, you know, i- the, the, the MBT community's law is, is just the sort of amendment to chapter 48. It's, it's within the existing zoning regime that the Commonwealth has set up. So, I mean, my instinct is, I mean, you know, demo delay is, is a general bylaw. It's not a zoning bylaw. But I mean, you know, my instinct is that other general bylaws that affect by right development, whether it's a one family house or a hundred family house would probably still apply. You know, and, and, and the other thing that I'll say is, you know, you, and, and, and this is something that, you know, the state has been explicit about. You know, and, and I'll, I'll use the example of, um, you know, uh, mixed use development. You're allowed to do mixed use development, but you can't require mixed use development. You know, the, the reason being, you know, i- i- if you have a district like, you know, again, you know, you, you're down on, you know, Hillside Street, you know, in the middle of kind of Scotts Woods. And you say, we want to do a multifamily building that has to have ground floor, floor commercial. That's, that's crazy. Um, so they don't want towns doing that. But what they have said is if you really do have a district where you want to encourage mixed use development, you know, that your, your, your base zoning has to be, you know, residential only, that's what you can acquire. But you can incentivize other things that you do want. So, you know, your base zoning could say you're allowed to build, you know, this building at this height at 15 units per acre. Uh, you can do 20 units per acre if you build mixed use or if you build additional affordable housing or if you do historic preservation. So, you know, you can imagine a world where, you know, you can identify, you know, pockets where you'd want to do that type of preservation and say like, yeah, you could do a three family by right, but you can do five units if you preserve the house. I mean, I'm, I'm just kind of like throwing numbers and things out there, but that it's a thing to think about just within the sort of the zoning to kind of provide incentives for kind of what you want. But I think the demo delay question is a valid one. And, and my first instinct that I'll, I'll kind of get, you know, from clapping on this is that, you know, if, if, if you get demo delay, delay for a one family house, you would get demo delay. If you're demolishing a building, you're demolishing a building. And, you know, those, those bylaws passed and they passed muster and we're allowed to do it. So, uh, but I'll, I'll get clarity on that as well. And so I, I've got the other questions, you know, the, the big question about design guidelines, what the interaction is there. I think a little bit of, of clarity on how existing multifamily housing in, in a district would kind of affect the numbers. I just need to still kind of wrap our, our, our heads around that. I can, I can calculate the, the current density of the Elliot Street corridor. I can, I can do similar kind of that Blue Hills Parkway kind of corridor, you know, which is another area that would be within, um, you know, within the district. And then I, I think by the time we meet again, we'll have a little bit more, um, I keep on using the term clarity. We're not going to have that much clarity on anything anytime soon, gang. But, um, I think we'll know whether or not we've got some grant funding for, um, at which point I may put some kind of example scopes in your hands. And then we've got to talk through, you know, other things that we may want to put in a scope of work. One thing that I will say, and I don't. So Mass Housing Partnership, which is kind of the, the, been kind of the state's kind of brain trust on this issue, has been running a series of webinars, um, about various issues related. They're, they're doing like 10 of them. I, I missed the one on, um, on, on utility infrastructure, but I think that will be very interesting. But, um, they are having the state come in next week to kind of talk through what are sort of the next steps for compliance for communities. They, they've, they've said that they're putting together what they call a compliance model, which is going to be a tool that's specifically tailored for each, each town where basically you can kind of draw a district in the state GIS map and it'll kind of import all of those parcels into the model. And you can start to kind of modulate density. All of this is to say, I think there's going to be technical work that we'll be able to do in-house using tools that the state provides. And so we'll just want, I, I'm, I'm hoping to know a little bit more about that stuff before we get a scope of work out on this. Because I want to, I want to be asking consultants to do things that I can't do. Um, and if the state's going to provide tools that I can use, you know, to do some of like the, the nitty gritty technical zoning work, we may want to spend our money on some of that analysis that Sean was speaking to. So, um, that may be a topic for discussion for the next meeting.
And so, Tim, under Elliot Street analysis, just quickly, there are three family examples in Milton. I know that, um, when we were looking at that, um, small overlay at the intersection of Brook and Blue Hills Parkway. You know, there's, um, next to the church, between the church and the food mart, I think, there's a couple of three families there. And I, I think you could probably through the GIS mapping, see, uh, get a few other examples. Again, just for visual for people to say, if, if you start, if you start talking about allowing three families and people say, do we have them in Milton already? Because I think, oh, I think many people were, um, surprised at how many two families, um, there are in Milton. Um, and when we had that mapped, you could see that there were quite a number of them. And so, um, anyway, a- again, just a, a local example of a housing type and stock, I think is useful for people in understanding what we're talking about.
And, and Tim, I, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, but this is before we really, you know, get, doing too much work on this. I am still struggling with the definition that we are considered high speed transit on a high speed transit line. I looked up, you know, I did a search on the Matapan Trolley and it's, it's actually called a slow speed or a low speed. It is not a high speed transit line. It's a Matapan Trolley, which is technically considered part of the red line, a connector to the red line. So in essence, part of the red line. But it clearly states the Matapan Trolley, um, has never been considered a high speed transit. And by definition, I don't know if we have a legal position that we, um, that we are not on a high speed transit. And if we can demonstrate that, um, you know, I, I don't know if we're just assuming we're high speed transit because it's a connector to the Ashmont line and considered part of the red line. But if you look up the Matapan Trolley, it clearly, it, it, it's clearly not high speed transit. And I, I just, I think that's really important that we shouldn't jump into this if, if, it really shouldn't tie to us.
What, what I'll say is that, um, D H C D put together their, their guidance, um, in consultation with the MBTA when they kind of created tranches of communities. So rapid transit commuter rail and then kind of adjacent communities. So these are communities that border or have catchment areas, but don't actually have stations. So the T considers, um, you know, the T considers the Matapan Trolley to be light rail kind of on, on a level with, you know, with like the green line, um, effectively. It's, it's not heavy rail subway, um, but the green line is, is considered to be rapid transit in the same way that the Matapan Trolley is. So, um, I, you know, you, you all call the shots. I, I, I don't think it would be a fruitful argument to make to the state because they'll just tell us it's a train. Sorry. Um, because the only, the only other, the, the way that they've kind of developed the tranches of communities and these, these tranches kind of affect the percentage of, of, of new housing you have produced. There's not a lot of granularity there. So it's rapid transit commuter rail, adjacent community. So that even if we said, you know, even if they said, yeah, it's kind of closer to a bus than a train, which I don't think they would. But even if they did, there's not a place for Milton in those other characterizations. So, you know.
The bus would actually run faster, but that's.
You know, Meredith, they, they, they tried, they, they tried a couple of years ago to, to talk about ripping up the tracks and putting down, you know, a high speed, you know, bus rapid transit. And, uh, people, people did not like that idea. Um, but, you know.
Yeah. I, I like our trolley. I like.
No, it's, no, it's, it's great. And, and, and I, I, you know, it could, it could go faster. It could be nicer. You know, but I, I, I don't think the T or D H C D would kind of yield on that.
All right. I just didn't want to make sure that we're not.
No.
Just making assumptions that are not, you know.
Their definition.
We shouldn't ask the questions. Okay. Thank you. And Sean, you had a one more question before we wrap up.
Uh, I don't have a question. I'm making a motion after three and a half hours to adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
Second. Okay. That's great. Um, yes, roll call then. Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And again, Tim, thank you so much for all your work on this.
Have a good night, everybody.
Before you guys leave, can I, can I show you guys something like you may or may not have seen? Are you guys all familiar with Ellie Hall?
Oh.
I had some Meredith.
How did you get that copy?
Well, I know this gets, I guess this goes to every house. It's scroll magazine.
My dog made the, yeah.
Very popular pet, yeah.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
All right. Have a great night, guys.
Good night all.